And we would like to welcome public comment, not questions tonight, but definitely public comment if you thought of anything in the meantime. And welcome our cab and the new member Ken Welter, who's representing Linfield. And are there any liaisons present to the RMLD board? No. So I guess we can move on to our interview for the interim and acting general manager of the RMLD. Tonight we'll be starting and welcoming Hameed Jafari.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I get the first question.
Great.
Senority has his privileges. So the first question we ask is, "Explain a time when you made it happen to complete an urgent task and deliver results. What challenges did you have to overcome? How would you relate this experience in being the interim general manager of the RMLD going forward?"
First and foremost, let me thank the board for the opportunity that you've provided for me so I can participate in this process. And to answer your question, give you an example. When we decided to install that two and a half megawatt generator, the peak shaving unit, back then it was basically the industry trend. Obviously today it's not, but you know, back then it was. So we had a number of challenges that we had to meet. And as you know, the permitting process and gas, and this was something new territory. So it required us to-
Hello Erica?
Hi John, can you hear us?
Okay, now I can hear you. Yes.
I'm just answering on question one.
So it required us to collect information and do a thorough investigation about, you know, the process and you know, what it entails and what we need to do. And managing the project from A to Z. And we had some of the challenges with the gas line that was coming down the Chestnut Street and the pipes that the international-
Could you move the microphone closer to Hameed? It tends to cut in and cut out.
Can you hear me John?
Yes, there you go. Thank you.
Great, by all means. Yeah. So we had to go, you know, we had to contact a number of parties in order to do the tight coordination so we can, you know, make sure that the generator is installed and it's gonna go online for the peak, for the peak shaving. So there was a number of challenges involving that because you know, we didn't have, like we're not in the gas business and we had a hard time bringing contractors that they are certified in order to do that for the safety and for the installation of the unit. So I went, I did my research. I educated myself about, you know, the process. And what I did, I made sure the project is moving along without, you know, stress for everybody else but myself. And to make sure that, you know, it gets done and the goal is accomplished because that's what we said we gotta do. So I wasn't gonna let the project to be delayed or God forbid fail because of the bumps in the road that, you know, we faced. And you know, I had to educate myself about the gas business. And I did that. And you know, it became a success at the end of the day. And you know, we had the generator installed. And so far, you know, it's been really helping us to, for peak shaving in order to save money for the ratepayers on the capacity and transmission charges. Which back then the capacity was high, the transmission was lower. Now it's the other way around. But that really helped us, the process. And that's pretty much, that's my leadership style. I mean, I believe that, you know, any great leaders that should, you know, in order to make the decisions and making sure the project is successful, they need to be, collect information. And they need to look at the future demand and the future of the industry, where the industry is going. And then follow the best business practices. And practically, that's what I've been doing all along for decision-making and leadership. And then what you need to do, you need to put the right people with the project. Because everybody in the organization has different talents. So one of the responsibilities of the leader is to identify the talents and the type of resources he has, and then bringing those resources together in order to make the project go smooth and successful. So that was my first experience. And it was a great experience in doing the gas, you know, generator. And he went, I think he went, you know, even though we had some bumps in the road, I think it was managed very well. Because I got strong project management skills over thirty-eight years of project management. So it's really helped me along.
I'm sorry, Hameed is breaking up on me again still. I have good connection here.
Yeah.
But is there anything you can do to improve the audio?
Yeah. Is there any way you could do?
John, you can mute your phone to keep speaking with your email.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Do you wanna sit closer to the phone here?
You wanna do that? Sure, I could do that.
That should be better John.
All right. John, can you hear me now?
Yes, now I can hear you. That's great. Thank you very much.
Great, by all means. Thank you. Yeah, and I've also had other challenges along the way. You know, I've been doing this job for over thirty-eight, thirty-four years, being in management and in the leadership position to making critical decisions. So, and that's what my expertise are. To, you know, to manage crisis and making the, you know, informed decisions about the projects and everything else in the organization.
I forgot in the beginning to at least mention the guidelines that we have about six questions.
Right.
And that we will be, or five. And we will be allocating seven or eight minutes to each.
Sure.
But then at the end, there will be time to go back if you forgot something or something else you wanted to mention.
So just a follow-up, Hameed?
Yes.
The second half of the question was, "How are you gonna relate this to your experience to being the interim general manager going forward?"
Well, in order to, like what I said, the leaders, the way I see that, you know, the leaders are visionary people. They have to have a vision and they have to have a plan and they need to have a strategy. So using this example, my vision was really to help the utility and help the ratepayers to save money, you know, for cutting their transmission and also capacity charges. And relating to that, you know, we made a decision with the GM to go forward with installing that generator. And like what I said, we, that was the strategy. That was the strategy. And then, you know, we had to make a plan. So we made the plan and we made it happen. So the same thing I'm gonna use over here. I collect information. I make sure the information that I have are related and make sure it's looking at the three sixty degree, all sides, everything. And making sure that, you know, everything is calculated and accounted for. And then, you know, we look at the industry, which direction the industry is going. And following the industry best practices, try to make the best informed decision possible for the interest of the ratepayers. I always put the ratepayers' interests above everything else. Obviously with the highest priority being the safety, public safety and employee safety. So using that strategy that, you know, used for that example, you know, we did the study. We did our homework to see that, you know, what is the industry best practice? And what we need to do in order to make that happen. So we use that information to build a strategy, build a plan and follow the plan and manage the project successfully. So that's how, what my, I'm gonna do as interim general manager. You know, making sure I have correct information, informed information and, you know, and obviously consult with the people, that, you know, my team. Because, you know, it's a teamwork. So you need to build a team in order to make the decision. And that's one of my strong points, I'm a team builder. So I know how to do. And, you know, I also have a good vision about the future to see what the industry trends are and where the industry is going. And, you know, I educate myself about this stuff that I don't know in order to make decisions. So, and this process helped me to, you know, to self-motivate myself in order to, you know, learn about the business and what it entails, what are the pitfalls? And then, you know, go about that and making sure it gets done right. You're welcome.
I'm sure you know you better.
Yeah, I'm good.
The next question is from Commissioner Stempak.
Yes, hi Hameed.
Hi.
What do you feel is the one or two major challenges the RMLD faces? And how might you address those challenges?
Yeah, well, our industry, thank you John for the question. It's a very good question. The challenges that the RMLD is facing is basically the challenges that the industry is facing in the future. That is the volatile energy market. And also the strategy that we need to make, how to make the transition. Which again, a good leader, a good interim general manager would, you know, do the gap analysis to see where the organization is and where it needs to be. And then closing that gap. So our industry, our challenges are, you know, we need to make sure we are reaching the full compliance, the net zero carbon compliance by 2050. So in order to do that, having that goal in mind, we need to definitely make the best and most reliable or provide the best and most reliable system that can support the 2050 net zero compliance regulation and electrification at the lowest cost, offering, you know, flexible rate structure. And that basically is what we need to do. We need to have dynamic pricing and the industry is going toward that. And we also need to do the cost of services study. Right now we do it every three years. So there's a time that, you know, we need to go maybe every two years or every year in order to know where the industry is and where it's going and make changes to the rates as we go on. So the customers, you know, it's gonna have a minimum impact on the customers. And the customers, they have a choice about picking the rates and, you know, when they wanna, they wanna, you know, especially with the electrifications and EV chargers. You're gonna see that the load is gonna, forecasting the load to increase to sixty percent. But in my opinion, the load is gonna double up by 2050. So one of the biggest challenges we have would be to build our infrastructure, the distribution infrastructure, that it's ready to take that load. This is the same thing National Grid and EverSource they doing at the one fifteen KV transmission lines. They're building that so it can carry the load and it can, it would be ready when the time comes. So we need to do the same thing. Luckily, what we did originally back in 2015, when we did the planning study, we knew had, we had the vision about the future load growth in the system. And we started reinforcing the distribution infrastructure so it can take the load by the time that, you know, it's doubling up. We started, you know, with the taller poles. We started to beefing up the pole sizes, the wire sizes, you know, to the maximum that the AKV can put on the poles. We started doing the analysis for the support of the structure. And also making sure the substations are ready and they have the capacity needed in order to support the load, the load growth. So EV chargers and electrifications, it's gonna definitely, you know, it's going at a rapid pace. So we need to keep up with it. We also, another thing we did, which was very challenging for us, to change our distribution transformer loading policy. Most companies, they load them to a hundred percent or even, so we load them to eighty percent. We had to make a strategic decision to drop the load to seventy percent with anticipation of the load growth that we're gonna see in the system. And we might have to even change that to sixty percent. So the challenges to, in a nutshell, the challenges are electrification, load growth and also renewable. Now, in the renewable sense, we need to make sure that, you know, well, we play smart. And, you know, we secure the contracts with class one certificate and retire the ones that, you know, are cheaper and, you know, are basically are at the end of their useful life. And retire some and buy some in the, invest into the future in the true sense of being green, not the paper green. So I hope I answered your question. Do you need more explanation?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Can we do it on time Janet? Just so I can have a feel for it. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So the next question is from Commissioner Talbot.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Hameed, for applying for the job and for being here tonight.
Thank you.
The question that I'm asking sort of builds on one of the comments you made about being a team builder. Just asking you to describe a typical, you know, workday at RMLD for you. How is it that you, you know, you come into work? How is it that you interact with colleagues and coworkers? And obviously your reports in the workplace on a typical day? Like just walk us through how that looks and how you actually operate daily.
Sure. In a typical day, usually I have two staff meetings, Mondays and Thursdays in general, that I go through all the projects, all the assignments, just to be transparent. I'm a strong believer of transparency and clear and concise communication. So in order to be successful, these are the two key factors. Concise communication, clear communication and clear expectations. And that's what I do. I go through the projects one by one. I assign them to the people. First, I have what I've done. The very first thing I did when I came on board back in 2014, I did analysis. I did the SWOT analysis, the strength weaknesses, opportunities and threats to the organization to see that, you know, what are the opportunities that we can grab. Also, what we did, what I did, I did the talent assessment. So to see that, you know, what everybody's capability is, what skills they have, what they need to add skills in order to be successful for a project. So I assign the projects based on the talent and specific skills that that project requires. And then, you know, I start building my team. So the team building is based on the assessment of the individual's capabilities and also project type. And I do that. And then I follow up. Again, what I said, like what I said, I have a strong project management skills. I've been doing that for thirty-eight years. That's how, that's a secret of my success. That's how I get everything done. That you see every year, every year we come in with, you know, every, in September, in September before it used to be the fiscal year, and give you the six-year plan. I'm gonna tell you that these are the projects. These are based underneath the system that we have assessed. And then, you know, when, and also the technology roadmap that I put together. So put two and two together to match, create those projects and assign them, you know, to the people based on their skills and what they can bring to the table. And, you know, usually I have a primary and I have the secondary person assigned. So if the primary is out, the secondary could really manage the project. And there's always somebody who you can get information from if you need to get information about the project. And then another role that I have, I'm coaching. I'm a good coach. I'm an educator, I'm an educator. I've been doing it for over twenty, twenty-five years, educating people. I'm a good trainer. So if I need to step in and help, I'm gonna roll up my sleeves and, you know, I get to work. And that's basically my leadership style. I just don't tell people that, you know, just go ahead and do that and bring me the results. So I step in when I need to, to help them to succeed. I set my, I set up my team members for the success. Because the way I look at it, if they fail, I fail. So because I don't wanna be failure and I don't wanna fail, I make sure they succeed. So that's how, you know, we go. So on a day-to-day basis, the people, they come to me for decision-making. I'm here every day almost five thirty, six o'clock. Before then, until eight o'clock, you know, I try to catch up and plan for the day. I have the, my project charts and also project scheduling for annual. I break them down into quarterly and into monthly. And then I know, I check every task to make sure that, you know, we're not falling behind. And all the projects, they go, you know, they go in harmony. So one is not lagging or one, the other one is, you know, going, getting ahead of the schedule. So they're all moving in harmony with one another. And the areas that there are roadblocks, my job is as a facilitator to make sure that I remove those roadblocks and help them to, you know, get the project done in a successful manner. And throughout the day, I go to visit my team. I'm not just sitting at my desk. I go out in the field because I wanna make sure that everybody's playing safe, the setup is right. And, you know, because, to me, like what I said, the public safety and employee safety are the highest priorities. So I get out there just to make sure that the people are doing the right things and the projects are moving along, checking the productivity, efficiency. I help the engineers with planning and for engineering. I'm a very skilled engineer. So I have all the talents. I have, I can, you know, pretty much do everything from the design to protection, coordination and also to the planning. And I'm a good planner. So that's how we get things done. That's why the ratepayers are enjoying their, having the most reliable and resilient system because of the good planning. And I'm not taking all the credit by myself because I can't do it all by myself. I have a great support from my team. I have a great team, great people, you know, that, you know, that are behind every project to get them done successfully. So I'm coaching, I'm training them, I'm, you know, coaching them. And I make sure that, you know, they have all the tools that they need in order to get the project to take that to finish line. So I'm all over during the day. I go to substations just to make sure the substation people, they're safe and everything is getting done. And if they need any tools or they need any training, I have a great network of trainers and the people in the industry that if I need to send them for training, I just send them to the training. I don't need to wait for the next time that, you know, well, they offer the training. I just pick up the phone and I tell them that, you know, well, listen, I, I'm gonna bring, I want two people, three people trained immediately. And I just send them. And, you know, that's how we do things. Because the key of success is the education and skills. There was some time that, you know, well, the time ago that, you know, everybody taught that, you know, well, knowledge is power. Now the world has changed. The application of knowledge is power. This is what makes people, bringing success to the people. Because knowledge, you can Google that and you can self-educate yourself. But to, in order to be able to do that, you need to be skilled and you need to be educated to do that. And this is what I'm emphasizing and continuously looking ways to educate my people so they have the tools necessary and the skills necessary to it. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a huge cost saving. The more educated people, the more skilled they are, they can get the job done quickly and the productivity goes up, efficiency goes increased. And that's how the project gets done and it becomes successful. Again, you have to balance the cost and reliability. I always have those two factors. I don't wanna sacrifice the reliability against the cost. And I don't wanna go up in the cost and, you know, while, you know, you have to make informed decisions. And that's what my, I have been, you know, trained and I have been, I've done all my life, basically all my organizational life, saving the ratepayers millions of dollars. And I can strongly tell you that, you know, with confidence, since I've walked into RMLD, I've saved millions of dollars. Whether through the maintenance programs, whether through the, you know, the reinforcement of the infrastructure, the distribution reliability and all on all. And that's what, that's a pride that I take in doing that. And I'm planning to do, continue the same when I'm an interim general manager, if I'm selected. Thank you. Any more follow-ups?
No.
Commissioner Coulter will ask the next question.
Thank you. Thank you, Hameed. Thank you, Commissioner. Question four. Talent acquisition and management is becoming increasingly difficult, you know, as you know. How would you inspire all your employees to ensure that they feel values, valued at work as a team? And what steps would you follow up to ensure securing the best hires to fill vacancies? And how would you incentivize talent to stay? So three parts, one at a time.
Sure. First, you know, in order to, the employees, they need to be motivated. So as a manager, you need to motivate the employees in order to, you know, get the job done. Now, one of the challenges that we meet, we have in the industry, our aging retired, retiring force. You know, the people are people that, the people are retiring. And, you know, it's hard to attract people in order to come and stay in the industry. So what we are doing, we are through the networking, what I've done, through LinkedIn, also contact with the schools, trying to attract talents, trying to bring the people, let the people know what this industry, what a great industry it is and what are the benefits of working, especially in the public sector. I mean, it's a great honor, at least for me, to be working, to be serving, you know, the public. That's the joy that I take home. I wish I'd done that from day one when I started with Boston Edison. You know, long, a long time ago, thirty, thirty, over thirty years ago. So, so you need, we need to educate people again and you need to introduce the benefits of, not the financial benefits and benefits that, and the joy that it brings to the people that are contributing to the system over here. So one of the biggest differences between the IOUs and also investor-owned utilities and public-owned utilities is that you get to change, you get to see the results. I guess you know Bob, what I'm talking about, you know, with, when I was working with Boston Edison, you know, we had long projects and proposals that they're sitting on the, you know, in the shelf and none of them, they get accomplished. You're lucky if you get one out of ten done. Over here, we see the need, we do this study, we plan and we come up with the, you know, projects and we get them done, we deliver. So that's very, that's really enjoyable. That's what gets you going. So the people, they need to, the sense of being able to accomplish something, it's that what every, every individual needs to be attracted to the business. So that's what I do. That's why I got myself involved in organizations like EKNE, teaching at the university also. I'm a part-time instructor and, you know, adjunct professor. So I go and that's what my job is, to advertise and also let them know what this industry is all about and what are the great things that this industry got to offer and attract the talents that way. Okay? Now, internally what I do, I try, like what I said, I have identified the talents and the talent management again is my job to make sure that the people, right talents are assigned to the right project. So that's what I do. I try to match the talent with the project. And then they stay, they enjoy and they get it done. And, you know, another thing that I'm doing and I've done, I'm trying to team, make the team to educate themselves because everybody got their strengths and weaknesses. Nobody's perfect. So they try to teach one another, set up the team so they can teach one another and exchange ideas and bring, bring out the best of everybody. And again, that's, that is the job that, you know, I think a good manager would do. And that's what I'm proud of because my team is successful because we have been able to do that successfully and it's working. I've been doing that for over thirty-four years. And everywhere that I've made, I've worked, I've made a great difference in the people's life. That's what I'm proud of and that's what I wanna take to my retirement. Because nothing is more enjoyable than, you know, you know, that you're getting into community, you made a big difference in their lives. And, you know, you, the reliability is great. You've made your contributions[1743.27] You've made your contributions and, you know, you take that with you, you know, to the last day you live. So, and that's what I do. And I'm continuously trying to identify talents, like through LinkedIn. I have a great network of people and we recently actually hired a couple of people like that, that I know them. I know their, their talent, I know their interests. And then we try to bring them on and they usually that way, you know, they're successful. And I pass the word around to, to other, you know, colleagues. And, you know, I, I, I just meet with them and I bring them on and educate them. I introduce them to HR so they get the benefits and all after that. And one of the greatest things about us would be that, you know, well, we offer a great training. So once the individuals, they know that, you know, they're gonna receive good training, they get the skills they need and they get the tools that, you know, it's provided to them that they have to, basically, other, you know, other organizations, they have to, you know, kind of in some way, they have to beg for it. Over here, they don't have to beg for it because we are all open-minded and we're pro-education, pro-training and we, we are proactive, not reactive. So all of these, you know, all the things, tools that you need in order to attract talents. And now, in order to retain them, it's very important that you continuously, because monetary incentives, the research has shown that it's not the reason that individuals, they stay. If you're not happy at the job, you need to continuously challenge yourself. So we challenge them, we educate them, we provide training and we always look out for the best trainers, best people in the industry to come and do the trainings. And, you know, and that's what I'm proud of. And that's my job as a manager is to identify those trainers and the best of the industry, bring them in and train, train my, my people and send people out for specific and very specific and technical training. So they're, they're happy. They see, you know, they, they feel good about themselves. And, and that's a pride that we, I take.
Thank you.
Did I answer everything that you?
You, you, you did. I was gonna, I was gonna catch you part one, part two, part three, but you got all three. You did good.
Good. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up here? You've talked about engineering and the side of the company that you run.
Right.
Can you address how you would approach the encounter, the encounter with the finance side of the company?
Oh, that's a great question. That's a very good question. I like that question. Well, we've got a great relationship with business finance and IRD. We're all working as a team. I mean, we don't work in a silo. So what we did, trained engineers in FERC accounting. So everything, every work order, every day, every, every job that they do, there is a FERC accounting associated with that. So when it goes to, to the business finance group, they know that, you know, this, this expense belongs to what bucket. Whether it's maintenance or whether it's capital, capital that it needs to be depreciated over thirty years or whatever years the life of the equipment is. So that way, it makes their job easier in order to identify the, and, and find the cost area that, you know, it belongs to. So and which bucket it belongs to. So we're working closely and also for billing, we also did, and this is one of the things that, you know, we need to do definitely if I'm selected as a general manager, we need the integrated work order management system. The integrated work order management system is a system that is comprised of the business finance, accounting, billing, engineering, design, metering and also the energy and also energy and, and load forecasting. So we already have TLM that is forecasting the load and we need, once we have the AMI MDM project done that is in the queue, then we're gonna have all those tools. Now we have to, we have all the elements that IA, IWMS needs in order to estimate the jobs, estimate the projects and, you know, get them done. So that's how we work together. And then we, then, once we estimate the project, it's gonna go to business finance group so they can build the customer for the construction, in aid of construction. So we get that, the money from the customer and then we start, you know, the project, building the project. Once the meter is energized, we call it done. And then, you know, we start billing the customers on a regular monthly.
Okay. So, you know, if I get, I'm gonna, the follow-up question. So, I mean, you deal more with the energy side, more with the engineering side.
Right.
The finances, the, the financial statements that we get, how familiar are you with those?
I'm, I'm familiar with the financial state, statements. I, I know about the liabilities, the liabilities where we have OPEF fund and, you know, the, the sick buyback, the employees and also the pension. So all the current and non-current, you know, financials and liabilities that we have above the line, you know. I, I know, I know, I don't know which part are you interested. But I know what, what the definition of the above the line is, what below the line is and, you know, all kind of things. Yeah, I see the financial, I feel comfortable with financial statements and, you know, I have a close, very close interaction with the finance director. So we can always think about, you know, what, what is called expense, what is called, you know, capital. And every year when we do the financials and we present the budget, how much, you know, depreciation, usually depreciation is about three percent, you know, and then what could be depreciated, what cannot be depreciated, how much operational fund we can transfer in order to fund the projects of the capital. Because there are two ways to do, actually, three ways to fund the capital. One is depreciation expense, which is three percent. The other one is the operational funds that we can transfer to, to subsidize it or to, you know, to fund it. And the last is the municipal bonds if you don't have enough money. And that's why we lay out a six-year plan to see that, you know, where we start and where we end and what we need to do. So that's my, that's how we sit down and go over everything, just make sure, you know, we're not gonna, you know, drain the, you know, the pool. And we go in harmony. Every project also, I'm watching the cost. I know that, you know, what's been budgeted. So my job at the higher level is to look at the financials and make sure that, you know, the spendings are not, you know, in some areas, you know, some, it's something beyond your control that just recently we had due to the supply chain, demand changes, the cost went up. That's beyond our control. And then, you know, we need to make sure that we bring that up to the board and the board is informed about, you know, just like what we did. And, you know, help us to make sure we meet the demand and we meet the goals of the, you know, the year and also be proactive again, rather than reactive. So I, every, I look at every cost, every spending to make sure it's not, you know, you're not gonna go way above the budget. But sometimes, you know, unfortunately, due to uncontrollable environment like what we are in and living in the day, what we're living in today, you can have, you have no choice. You have to, you know, it's understandable. As long as, you know, we have clear, concise communication with the board and the board is informed and they know what, what are the obstacles and what the problems are, then, you know, I think we can work together. Our job is to work together to make sure that, you know, we make the best informed decision to the best interest of the ratepayers. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you answered the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to do the follow-ups.
Bye. Thank you.
I have a final two questions. Hameed, how would you affect a culture change in an organization? How do you see the relationship between the general manager and a healthy company culture? How can the Board of Commissioners support a positive company culture with the four towns serviced by RMLD? And I can repeat any of that.
Yeah, yeah, thank, that's, I, I got the question. Thank you. What, the culture change, it's always a challenge for every organization. You need, I guess, part of it, I mean, in some, in some instances, you need help from outside consultants, from professionals who have been doing that. This is not something that can be done easily just by me or by anybody. You need to make sure it's very, it's a very, very sensitive area. So you need to make sure you do your study and you see that, you know, where are the areas that, you know, you're trying to change? What behavior, you have to identify the behavior that you're trying to change. And what is that change, whether it's worth the risks or not? And definitely, if it's worth the risk and you know exactly that's what they, that's what's required, then you're gonna have to self-educate yourself about it and look for help for the professionals who this is their job. That's like, you know, when you go to doctor, you know, you, you go to doctor for heart, you go to heart specialist, you know. You don't go to the kidney specialist for that. So you have to identify what is the problem and then go about that and, you know, make sure you make informed decision. Now, that requires collaboration, cooperation between employees and the management and the board. So what you need to do, I think education again is a big part of that. The employees, they need to know what is the behavior that we're trying to change and what kind of impact would it have on their life. And once they know, they're educated and they see the benefits, they cooperate. So you need to create, as a manager, you need to create a cooperative environment that the people, they don't see that is a, is a threat to their life, organizational life. Okay? You know, that's very important to reinforce. So if you educate them and make sure the change is to their benefit and how they would benefit from it, I think you're gonna get, you know, you're gonna get the cooperation that you need. And then with the help of professionals, you can help changing that. Another thing is also, it's very important to maintain great relationship with the communities that you're serving. We are providing service for them. We are their servants, basically. So we need to listen to the needs. I mean, a great leader is a good listener. You listen and you, you know, you follow up, you do your homework. You, you're gonna have to look at every, every, every change, every call, whether it's cultural or any project, anything. You deal with the, you know, with the outside, with the other towns or any, any outside agencies. You need to make sure that they know what you're after and you understand their needs and you respond to the needs exactly where, what, what they need to, what they need to, to know. And then you educate them and you bring options to them. You're not just gonna go with one, say, this is the solution. They need to know what are the options available and then you need to make them as part of the decision-making process. This has been my, one of my areas that I've been successful because I make people, you know, my staff informed and also part of the decision-making process. I don't know, I don't have all the solutions. I don't claim to know everything. Nobody can claim that, you know, they know everything. But if you're a good listener, okay, and you've got a big eye and you've got, you've got an open mind, that's the key for making informed decisions and, you know, getting the cooperation that you need from the employees. And if you remove the attitude out of the way, you know, and personal interest out of the way, that's gonna make the process to go smoothly. Did I answer your question?
Well, how can the board support you?
The board could be a great supporter, you know, by, you know, well, it's a general manager's decision. It's a general manager's responsibility to bring the solutions. I'm not just coming to you with a problem. I'm coming with you with the solutions. And I'm gonna educate you about my research, that what I have done and what would be the best option, from option A, B and C. And I'm gonna make sure that, you know, you're on board and you understand exactly what, what needs to be, to be done. And then you help me to, you know, to, whether it's a policy or changing any operational procedure that I need to do. So to help me with that and provide me the support that I need if I need to hire outside resources. So support me on that so I can bring the right people to the, to the table in order to make the right decisions. Because we're all gonna be, we wanna be good, we wanna, we wanna have a great relationship again with the towns, with the outside agencies and also with the people and with the, with the staff, you know, with the people that are working for us. Because my belief is you're only as good as the people who are working for you. So, you know, that's been my strategy and that's what I do and that's what my expectation from the board would be, to understand exactly what the problem statement is. And, you know, when I bring them the solutions and I'm telling you what would be or recommending what would be the best option of all, so, you know, so to support me on that. And then we, I go and implement and bring the results back guaranteed with the success.
Well, then, lastly, why do you want this job? Why do you believe you're the best candidate for this position?
That's a loaded question. I can tell, tell you till tomorrow morning why I think I'm the best. So let me go over some of the, some of the, some of my qualities. Okay. Currently, I'm serving as assistant to GM. It's in part of my job description. According to chapter 164, the only thing that, you know, assistant to general manager cannot do is signing the contract. So short of signing the contracts, whenever the general manager been out, you know, I have been doing pretty much, you know, the job duties of whatever that needed to do to run the organization. I've been doing that for over thirty years that I've been in this industry. The prior engagement and town of Denver's that as Director of Engineering Operations, I was doing that and now I've been doing it here. So I am pretty experienced in doing that. Approximately two-thirds of the organization is reporting to me. So seventy-five percent, they're reporting to me. Another twenty-five percent, I have, I'm, I feel very comfortable in leading and managing them. No problem. I have a solid track, successful management experience over thirty-four years. And every community that I've been, I've brought nothing but success. So you can research that and ask for them. I got a great respect among my colleagues and in the industry and they know that, you know, my capabilities. They know that I bring nothing but success. And that's what I guarantee that I'm gonna bring to the table for, for the people, ratepayers as well as the board. I got a great knowledge of the financials and power supply contracts. I'm completely familiar with those. I know which direction we've gotta go to the future to guarantee that, you know, we, we meet the 2050, 2030 and 2050 regulations and compliance regulation and standards, which way we gotta go and what is the best way. And again, I wanna emphasize, I am firm believer of true green, true, true, true green. I mean, that, you know, well, we can, you know, retire the wrecks, the ones that, you know, they, 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 they are associated with the renewables in order to make sure we save our planet and, you know, be green. I have a great network of the key players in the industry. It took me thirty-four years to build that network. And I can, I can tell you, I know over, you know, at least five hundred people at the state, local and also professional organizations like I, New England ISO, National Grid and, you know, the, the EverSource and APPA and here. So I have a great resources to tap into and, you know, get help if I need to, to bring the best for RMLD and cost-saving measures for the ratepayers. I have proven leadership skills. Let's go over some of those and see that, you know, how I've been. The, a leader should be, I, I, I wanna start with the, with the phrase from the renowned organizational leadership scientist, Dr. Warren Benes. Warren Benes says, "Great leaders are visionary people who continuously striving for information to make the right and best decisions." That's a very, very profound statement. So let's look at my leadership. I'm visionary because I understand the market changes and the dynamic and, you know, they were, the industry is going. And I've always, I'm always doing the gap analysis, SWOT analysis to see that, you know, where the gap is and build a plan and a strategy in order to get us from status quo to where, you know, we need to go. I'm a strategist and I've demonstrated that because I believe in being proactive rather than reactive. I've always been proactive and not reactive. I designed the technology roadmap for RMLD. Again, that's, that was a strategy because I saw where the industry best practices are and where the industry is going and what we need to do in order to follow to become successful and bring more cost savings through that automation for the ratepayers and RMLD. I'm a planner. Reliability and resiliency, it's not just gonna come by itself. You need to be experienced. You need to understand the need of the system. And you need to have a plan in order to take you to, to the promised land. I am also a planner because, you know, in order to increase efficiency and productivity, you need to understand the system, you need to understand what you need to do, how you have to plan, how do you have to form the organization, how do you need to, to lead the people toward the vision as a, as a leader in order to make, make that a success. Team building, that's one of my strongest points. I just said, this is the secret of my success. Every project that, you know, you see every year, I'm coming to you and I say that, you know, well, we got, you know, over ninety percent of the projects done successfully or some years we get almost hundred percent, that's what it is. That's what it takes, the team building. Again, bringing the right talents to the, to the mix in order to make the project successful. And, you know, I always don't have the And, you know, I always don't have the best ideas, but I'm a listener, I educate myself, and I, you know, get people's opinion and make sure we make the best informed decisions as a team. Now, also the communication. In my opinion, the communication should be concise, clear, and to the point and transparent. And I think I've brought transparency to the team and whenever I did involve, because in order for you to make the right decision for the ratepayers, you need transparency. And I think the informations that are brought forward as a manager now and hopefully as a, you know, as a GM or interim GM in the future, that's gonna help you to make informed decisions. Because, you know, again, we're all in this together as a team for the success and for the interest of the ratepayers, for the best interest of the ratepayers. That's why we are here for, that's our job. Also trustworthiness, you know, that's another quality of the leadership. I think I'm trustworthy. I've done whatever I promised and I said I'm gonna do, I've done so far. You've been witnessing that for the past eight years. I'm a doer, I just don't talk about it. If I talk about it, I make sure it gets done. And then I bring forward to you the success stories, okay? Also, if, you know, if there is a, there is a problem with, it's my job to bring it and make you informed. The sooner the better. So, you know, we can all make the, with the solution. Again, I'm not gonna bring you the, just the problem. I'm gonna come with, to you with the solution and what I think it works and the recommendation. And then together we make the best informed decisions to the best interest of the RMLD ratepayers. Because are we trying to save costs and, you know, and making sure that, you know, that the people are, are happy? That's my key point. I wanna make sure everybody is happy in my system. And I think we are from what the, all the letters and everything we get. You know, the reliability is great, the financial is great. And, you know, they know that we're all out there to help them. And, you know, that's the pride that I take and I wanna continue that pride until the last day that I'm working as a proud public servant at RMLD. Thank you. Did I answer all your, any follow-up questions?
And so we would like to take a few minutes just to finalize our notes, but is there anything else you would like to know?
Oh, it's just a, it's just a short one. As you mentioned again, team building and staff informing the decision-making process and that's come up again. Just wondering, like at the beginning when we said, is there a time when you made something happen and a... So what's, what's a time when a member of the team did inform and informed this? Like what's, what's an example when you heard from the team and then ended up doing something differently or benefited from what they brought to the table?
Well, there is always one or two member of the team that, you know, well, they might have different ideas.
Yep.
We always discuss that, why do you think it's different? Just convince me, either you convince me or I convince you. Let's talk about it and then let's talk about the group, about that with the group. Just to give you an example, distribution automation, it's a big challenge for the utility. Some people, they're saying that, you know, well, oh, well, you know, we don't need automations, we are small utilities. You know, you can drive the truck right in ten minutes to the site and open the switch, close the switch. The reliability and the resiliency is the key. So if you're doing automation, we wanna bring the customers back to service at the fastest possible time. Most businesses now, they're working out of the home. Today, you know, they say they're off, they're no home, they're no residence. And every residence has an office and everybody is working from homes. So we have to respect that. And having that goal in mind, we need to make sure that the people, they get the best reliable service at the lowest cost. Okay, and then, you know, we, we need to, you know, we need to put their interest above our own. And again, like what I said, you know, yeah, the cost is going up. But if you, it might look like, you know, the cost is going up because you pay more for automation. But look at how much money you save. You reduce the truck rolls, right? And you reduce the, you know, the man-hours that you're gonna have to spend in order to, you know, that's gonna cut down the cost. And you saw, from one way the cost is going up, the other way the cost is going, the reliability, you know, goes up. And also from the other way, you know, the, 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 the operation cost goes down. So these are the decisions that you need to make and we discuss and, you know, we say that and I'm proud. Above all, automation is gonna bring safety, employee safety and the public safety. So with all those factors, these are my reasoning that I say that, you know, well, it's gotta go. And if you're against it, you know, sorry, this is with the industry best practice. I've done my homework and I usually don't go to the team and tell them that, you know, this is what we're gonna do. I'm gonna say, this is, these are the reasons that I think it works the best. These are the cost-saving measures, these are the benefits and this is, these are the, you know, probably the... I do the cost-benefit analysis and this is my, you know, my, my take on it. Now, if you can challenge me on that and you prove otherwise, let's hear it. If you don't, you know, I'm sorry, the train is gonna move north and, you know, you better jump on it. Thanks. Thank you. Any other questions, more questions?
I got one follow-up.
Yeah.
You talked about retiring the REX.
Right.
Then you also talked about acting in the best interest of, how many minutes I got?
Couple.
Okay, make it quick if you could. You talk about, you know, in the best interest of the ratepayers. How do you balance the finances of that with the rates to the ratepayers, you can be recognized, retiring the REX?
With the REX, you know, you, there are some REX that, you know, you buy. For every renewable, there is a REX associated with it. REX Class One, you know, these are the ones that we should keep. Some of the Class Two that, you know, they're not really worth much, you know, we can retire those. And then, you know, right now with our portfolio, we're well-covered beyond 2035. So we have some REX that are above that three percent rate increase that, you know, the line, the black line that we show every, at every meeting. There are some REX that are above that those we can, the ones that we have over, we can, you know, sell them in order to, and, you know, and then reinvest them to buy more in the future beyond 2030. We should seize every opportunity, in my opinion, to, you know, to add more to the portfolio beyond 2035. Because there are some talks at the state level that, you know, the 2030, it's gonna be more than fifty percent. They expect like faster rate for renewables.
Yep.
So we are, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, so we are, yeah. This is the, this is the decision that we're gonna have to, informed decision that we're gonna have to make in cooperation, collaboration with the IRD to see which REX they worth to retire and which ones we need to sell and reinvest in the future and go beyond 2035. And this is, you know, something that, you know, we're gonna have to deal with. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think we're gonna try to keep it too.
Okay, sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it and wishing you best of luck.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce themselves or jump right into the question.
We're gonna do the process first, right? The format first?
Well, the minute. Right, so there's five or six, six questions really, about seven or eight minutes for each one.
Great.
Roughly, nothing, stop.
I won't go long.
Okay.
Okay, ready? All right.
The senior casino has a question.
Okay, seniority has its privileges. Explain a time where you made it happen to complete an urgent task and deliver results. What challenges did you have to overcome? How would you relate this experience to being the interim general manager of the RMLD going forward?
An urgent task?
You can define that any way you like. An urgent task or a time you had to make it happen?
So probably an appropriate urgent task is when we were doing generators at Braintree Electric a couple of years back. And the challenge that we had was to figure out, so these were basically going on a customer site where the, these are two, two megawatt generators. The customer was a company called Fire King Bakery, they wanted it for resiliency. The landowner was a guy named, a guy named John. He made it challenging in terms of what part of the property, because he had the property split up into two pieces of where we could actually put the generators. We did, I think, probably a dozen different scenarios between the engineers at Braintree, the customer, a guy also named Greg. And we did a lot of negotiation with, with John to figure out a right location. I think the things about making it happen is we had a bunch of conflicting requirements. And we were working hard to get the generators fully configured and installed before the summer capacity peaks. So at the end of the day, I think the, the quick example is figuring out a compromise with our engineering team, with the customer, with the landowner, and with Braintree to make sure that we maintain reliability of their network to, and that they could actually do the connections in a fashion that allowed us to, to get the system installed before the, before June. This was probably two and a half years ago. So how can I relate that to the work at RMLD? You know, the, the goal is pretty clear. There are a lot of goals that are pretty clear for us here at RMLD. You've got to work with a variety of departments, both internal and external. Could be, could be commissioners, it could be the town, it could be external vendors. But the ability to figure out, to keep the vision, to keep the goal intact and make it such that at the end of the day, everybody's relatively happy. Figuring out the compromise, I think that's a skill that'll be very useful here, particularly going forward. In the future for us, the external world is changing pretty significantly. There's a lot of factors that we have some influence over and other ones that we don't. And I think the ability to kind of see, see an answer through, through the challenge and get everybody lined up and actually get it done is a daily skill here at RMLD. I could follow up, are we allowed to do the follow-up? Don't forget.
Yeah.
First of all, as I'll say to everybody, thanks a lot Greg for applying and for being here tonight. John, did you wanna say something?
John Davis is asking a follow-up question.
I think John can ask that.
John, did you wanna go first? Go ahead, John. Go ahead, John.
Oh, John, we were, we thought you had a follow-up question.
Oh, yeah, John, I thought you were trying to ask a follow-up.
We'll get to your question after.
Yeah, yeah, I just had a quick follow-up for Greg. Is that okay? Okay. It was just, in terms of this rapid response type of thing, maybe just to... Would you wanna address how you've done that recently with respect to some of the power supply contracts? Has that been, is that, is that another area or is that something that has been something where there was an urgent need? Or were those things just sort of, just maybe talk a little bit about that? Yeah, so we, relative to power supply, there are certain situations where an opportunity, I'm trying to think. So there was one last summer that came up, the HOLA contract with Gravity. And we, the commission meeting was coming up quickly. So we had to, we had to line up the ability to actually be on the agenda, to get the motion put together, to get all the materials from Gravity so that we could have a, you know, a clear and coherent presentation. Those aren't quite as frequent. That was one that was, you know, I won't call it last minute, but it was a good choice. The opportunity presented itself and we had to move quickly. Last year, we call it kind of a land grab, once the 2021 climate bill came into place. There are certainly opportunities and we're participating, as you guys know, to, to build solar and jump into wind. But there's no new hydros that are gonna get built. So we worked aggressively to find, this was one that came up and we, we jumped on it. So it was an example of where we had to move fairly quickly. I think generally speaking, and at that point in time, we were still kind of formulating our strategy. Now our strategy is pretty clear and we're, we're deep into the details in terms of saying, you know, where do we have holes in the portfolio, what are the opportunities, what are some things we might wanna trade out, trade out of? Maybe get out of some contracts early, just to kind of reposition it. But those are, those aren't urgent like, I mean, if they come up, I think the good news is, is that the, the ability to understand how the organization here works, the relationships with, with potential vendors to get answers quick allows us, when we need to, to move quickly and get the answer done and present something that is, you know, make sure we do the right analysis, but present something and, and actually get a contract that we probably would've missed otherwise. Thanks.
Yeah, let me ask a follow-up to that. How do you think we should have dealt with the Palmer biomass?
Before or after or like?
The whole thing, the whole process.
So I, so I wasn't in, in the beginning of it, so it's hard for me to comment in terms of, you know, what guidance. I think one of the things that we did as a group back in springtime of last year is we updated our Policy Thirty, as we call it now, Policy Thirty at Rev One. So we made some very clear guidance and directions in terms of things we're trying to do. I, I don't know how it was beforehand. I think we were creative in terms of figuring out a way to exit, once we figured out that we needed to exit. And, and we took advantage of, of market opportunities at that point in time. It was a, it was a low point in terms of, in particular, some of the, some of the forward price curves to actually get a deal that worked out favorably for us. So I think at the end of the day, the answer to the question is, you know, going forward, how will we do a better job? I think we've already put part of it in place in terms of, of what Policy Thirty says, Rev One. And then I think the other thing that we've done on a consistent basis is we've given you guys a pretty clear idea what our decarbonization strategy looks like. So now we're, now we're filling pockets as opposed to developing a strategy. Yeah, I'm good.
Commissioner Stumpack, would you like to ask your question now?
Sure, hi Greg.
Okay, Commissioner.
My question is, what do you think is the one or two major challenges RMLD faces? And how might you address those challenges?
One or two, I think in the package I put together for you guys, I gave a, kind of a, a list of, of key challenges. The first one on that list is, is personnel and HR related. And that, there's a whole bunch of different pieces to that. It's recruiting, it's retention, it's training, it's coordination. I think a lot of progress has been made in terms of breaking down the silos. I think there's more work to be done. The synchronization can partially be driven by metrics amongst the senior managers so that we're measured as one group is, is one piece that I would look at. And then one of the things that we've done in the IRD group is we have regular meetings on different topics. We keep them to a half hour each. We don't try and solve the problem necessarily in the meeting, but we try and use them as synchronization meetings. And then at the end of each meeting, action items and schedule the next meeting. So that's a, a tool relative to how we manage the team to get results done, that's an HR piece. I think the other, the other key piece, and I've mentioned that, I think on the, on the cover letter and also the priorities, and that is setting the vision, a clarity in terms of the strategy going forward. As we've talked about a fair amount at the various meetings, the world is changing very quickly around us. It is still a moving target. And I think laying out a strategy that has some flexibility but some clarity in terms of what key milestones are is, is critical going forward. You guys know from my background, at least in terms of the material I've provided, defining strategy, laying out a vision is one of the things that I've done in a variety of different industries over my career. So I, I would be able to, to fill both of those. Those are probably the top two.
Great, thank you Greg.
So what makes you the right person to handle them, Greg? Your second part of this question.
What makes me the right person to handle?
Yes, handle those challenges. Yes, handle those challenges.
Well, I think twofold, right? I've, so from my background and experience, I've started companies from scratch. So I think I have the experience on both laying out a vision, but also recruiting the team, training the team, providing the vision and guidance for the team. As you look at my resume, I've done that in a variety of different industries, whether it's in the software industry, the medical industry, materials industry, solar industry. I like building things. And in order to build things, it takes people, it takes a, a measurement of what people are doing, goals and milestones, and also takes a vision in terms of where we're trying to go. And one of the things I think I bring to the table, people know this, those that work with me around here, I'm a very high-energy guy with a lot of enthusiasm. And enthusiasm and energy, as long as it's pointed in the right direction, carries a team. It gets down to leadership at the end of the day.
Okay. Commissioner Talbot has a question, number three.
Uh, yeah, so since we sit up here in the DS or the remote DS, we don't have much of a picture of what happens day to day. So we, we would just like to just have you describe, for, for you, what is a typical workday at RMLD? How is it, and you, you touched on this a little bit already, but how is it that you interact with your colleagues and direct reports in the workplace? And how is, how is it that you operate? You mentioned something about these meetings. Just talk, talk to me about how you operate in day-to-day and how you interact with workers to get the best, sorry, colleagues and reports.
Yeah, colleagues and, yeah, the team. Um, I, you know, at the end of the day, or at the beginning of the day, trying to have, here are the, here are the three or four key things that we're trying to get accomplished, both me as an individual, in my role, you know, I have to pull my part of the ore, but the more important thing is giving milestones, not micromanaging, not specific, here's how to do things, but here's what we're trying to get accomplished. You'll notice in IRD, we have a lot of whiteboards. I do a lot of whiteboard work, conceptualizing. I'm not the only guy writing on the whiteboards. So the idea is, so the, the way I get things done with the colleagues within IRD is making it a team effort, providing clarity in terms of here, the things we're trying to get done this week, this month, there's the long-term goals. At the end of each meeting, where we talk about it, you know, who's got the action items? And, you know, if we need a follow-up meeting, I keep meetings short, relatively speaking, you know, a half hour is the max in our group. I think the second key piece is I tend to walk around the building a lot. I don't have a pedometer on me, but I spend time in the engineering group. I spend time coordinating with, with Janet and, and with the HR director and the current GM, with, with the engineering team. And, you know, there we're trying to solve problems. I, we do a lot of work on teams because we can share screens, right? A lot of our work is data. As you guys know, the product that we deal with, you, you don't see, you don't especially want to touch, but we got to measure it and we've got to manage it. And so a lot of our work is spreadsheet-based. I prefer to meet in person where I can, so I will literally, you know, I will literally kneel down, and I say that nicely, it's just I, I'm not a sitting kind of person typically. I'm either, my desk is a stand-up desk. I've got two drafting tables back-to-back. But I will literally, you know, look at a screen, we can't do it with teams, but I'll, I'll look at the data with people and give them directions, say, hey, look, this doesn't look right, take a look at that piece. So it's a lot of one-on-one. I think the other key thing in terms that I do, whether it's people of my department or it's other parts of the organization, is I extend a lot of appreciation and thanks and encouragement. I'm, I've been known for decades as an encourager. And people appreciate being appreciated. They tend to work harder. When somebody says, great job, thank you, or hey, we've got to do a little better this time in this particular direction, but the attention.
Follow-up? Yeah, my follow-up is, the one area you did not mention in your interaction is the finances. The finances in the business division.
Yep.
What is your interaction with that, that group?
I, I work with, since power supply is about three-quarters of the overall budget, I deal with, with the accounting and finance team almost daily. I work extensively with billing, three or four times, so I help deal with billing problems, billing opportunities, rates. We do new rates every month. So I'm engaged with the finance people literally every day. Literally every day. And sometimes, well, I tend to walk down there more than not. Sometimes we'll do it on a screen and sometimes we'll bring my laptop and figure out the answers. Obviously, finance is a critical piece. It's the, it's one of the metrics of how we run the business.
All right. We're in order.
Well, thank you Greg for taking the time for the interview, number one. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Talent acquisition and management is becoming increasingly difficult, right? You know that. How would you inspire all employees to ensure that they feel valued and work as a team? What steps would you follow to ensure securing the best hires to fill vacancies? And how do you incentivize the talent to stay? So three parts, I can, I can repeat them, there's, there's a lot in that question, but I'll ask the first part first, the second part second, third part third.
So you've got, the first one is feel valued, right?
Yeah, yes. How would you inspire all the employees to ensure that they feel valued and work together as a team?
So on, on that one, it's a lot of communication, whether it's, I will, I will message via Teams, I'll message via text, email on occasion. Emails are primarily externally oriented. The, but I'm, I'm an in-person kind of person. So in terms of how them, how they feel valued, I think it goes back to, here's the expectation, here's things that you can, you know, here, here's the output desired, and then encourage them to get it done, set schedules, milestones, et cetera. But I think at the end of the day, the key thing in terms of have people valued is literally, as I talked about before, say thank you and give them encouragement. And whether it's just somebody walking down the hallway, whether it's, you know, the purchasing people in terms of, we just finished a couple of projects, you know, thank you for managing the process. So a lot of thanks and a lot of encouragement. You, you can ask everybody to default, that's one of the key things in terms of feeling valued. The, the second piece, filling vacancies, that is a challenge for us, right? And on that, you know, I try and work closely with our HR director in terms of being creative in terms of how we position ourselves, trying to show the, the dynamic, and I use the word energy in a positive way, of what it is to work in a utility now. I don't try and contrast it too much with how it used to be, but I'll say, look, this isn't an old, staid utility. The world is dramatically different, given all the non-carbon stuff. If you want to build something, if you want to create something different, this is the place to be. So there's that positioning piece. And then I've started doing personal networking, where we've gotten some of our recent hires, and just letting people know that we're recruiting people, that we're hiring people. The biggest thing though, I think, in terms of, of attracting people, is this is a cool place to be. And, and once people get here, you know, there's a, there's an, you know, there's an energy, I think, and I use, again, there's an enthusiasm, particularly in the, in this corner of the building, which is IRD. We get stuff done, but we have fun doing it. And it's a, it's a non-traditional group that we're bringing in because of the, the world's changing, or at least parts of it are changing. Not, I mean, we still have to have the engineering talents, we still have to have things, but even on the engineering side, as me probably mentioned to you, the new world of engineering is becoming much more data-driven. Yes, we still have to hang poles, we still, I mean, hang transformers on poles, et cetera. But using data within the network to make the network faster, smarter, be more reliable and more flexible going forward, you know, throughout the organization, it's a different, it's becoming a different group of people. And then how do you incentivize talent to stay? The first step goes back to, you know, how you encourage them. If people feel appreciated, they're going to stay longer, right? We have to, we have to look at how we compensate people from a, a salary perspective, but salary's not the only piece, you know? The work that they do, the, making the, the roles challenging. I mean, we have, we have one superstar, I'll call her a superstar, she started a week after I started, a young woman named Sarah. But we have encouraged her and prompted her.
Encouraged her.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's right, we're a public forum. Anyways, so we have some individuals that, that, that we encourage and, and give them challenging assignments and correct them when things are, are not right, but in a, in a positive, encouraging way. At the end of the day, you know, to have people stick with you, they're going to feel the energy, they're going to feel the emotion. Again, not everybody's going to want to stay, but there's excitement here at the end of the day.
Please relax. Anything? Any follow-up to that?
Nope.
Okay.
No, thank you.
My question's about culture. It's how would you effect a culture change in an organization? How do you see the relationship between the general manager and a healthy company culture? How can the board of commissioners support a positive company culture with the four towns serviced by RMLD?
Um, a couple of things on that one. Probably just for a second here. So there's the, there's the relationship between the board of commissioners and the general manager and the teamwork associated with that relationship. That's going to, that's going to carry distance relative to how the internal organization uses. The relationship with the GM, everybody's got a different style. You know, I mean, everybody's got a different style. I'm, I'm, we've talked about this in the other questions, right? I'm a, I'm a, I'm a be next to the person, encourage them, let's go do something better. Whether it's streamlining the process, the steps, you know, I, I use an expression called one-touch, it's an expression I use with my kids, right? If you pick something up, don't put it down till you finish dealing with it. You know, just get, you know, don't do stuff halfway and then put it for a later time. It's simple things like that. I, I don't go around, I mean, it's a, I use that as an example for myself, et cetera. But if we have a rate to finish, if we have the P, so we just finished the PPCTs and the fuel and the NIPA rates for the month of May, we do analysis to prepare for that, but let's finish it now and get it approved, et cetera. In, in, in terms of the, you know, just make, so again, my style, not commenting on, on just how I, how I operate within IRD is, is, I, I work diligently, I'm willing to get my hands in the middle of stuff, I want to know the details, but I don't know, have to know every last detail. I need to be able to give them enough details to give direction. We focus on process changes. How do you take steps out of the process, right? How do you make it faster? Every step is there for a reason, at some point in time, it was put there for some purpose, might not be needed anymore. We took the, when Colleen, you know, when I first got here, she said, go fix the rebate process, and particularly the air source heat pump. It was long and arduous, et cetera, and we, and customers were saying, you know, where's, where's the process? And not sorry, where the check, but, you know, Colleen prompted me to look at the details and I, you know, from my other experiences, I worked in the software world and we, you know, my example there was a time when a company came to us, one of our big clients said, look, your cycle time is five days. And I was the new guy, I was a marketing strategy guy, I took over the operations of a $225 million, 1,200-person operation across three plants. And they said, Greg, you're great on strategy and you're great on marketing, et cetera, but you don't know operations. The customer said, you got to go from five days to 24 hours. The group said, it's not possible. I didn't have all the details, but I basically challenged them to say, map the process and figure out what we'd have to do to change it. So three months later, 80% of our products were, you know, within 24 hours. I didn't solve the problem, but I was able to challenge and prompt the group to do that. We're going to be doing the same thing here, you know, like, you know, we're looking at what's the, you know, what's the open part of our power supply position that we've got to fill in January and December of next year, where the rates are $187 per megawatt hour on the open market, right? Almost five times, I mean, and we, you know, we're in good shape, but how do you, how do you fill that, that part of it? How do you do it? And so we're thinking creatively out of the box. I think in terms of working with the towns, we've already, again, Colleen prompted me to, to, you know, start a process with the town of Reading in particular, relative to putting solar on municipal buildings. So we've done a lot of it of work in the background in terms of, you know, what's the real economic value of solar? Because panel price, you know, we, a year or two years ago, it was the dip in panel prices, so the cost of solar systems are going back up, but how do we make it work? And when we run the numbers to say, you know, when does, when does, when does solar generate that corresponds to capacity and transmission peaks? And remember, you know, Commissioner Pacino, back to your question, you know, everything, not everything we do, we, we look at what are the economics of the business? So obviously, as you guys have seen from the presentations that I've done and Wendy's done as well, but we look at it, the capacity and transmission of 40% of our cost structure. So if you put solar within territory, if you put anything within territory, you potentially could have a 40% discount in terms of your cost. But you have to be generating, you know, have to, you have to reduce that load during those peak hours, and the peak hours are shifting later and later in the day. Anyways, I, back to the, the key thing with the new town manager, we basically laid out a series of milestones between now and next January in terms of how to identify buildings. We've already exchanged some spreadsheets back and forth, but how do you make the process go forth and, and, you know, two, it might only be one building, it might be two buildings, whatever. But how do you, how do you affect change? When I first got here, we actually spent a lot of time talking to the North Reading School Board, we actually had a presentation to them, same basic topic, you know, we said we're going to, you know, it wasn't the right time, there would work had been done beforehand, but we have a good relationship with the town of, of North Reading. We're getting plugged in more so with some introductions that were, were reestablished with the, the town of Linfield for EV chargers, for example. And then of course, there's always opportunity, we're doing the public EV chargers with, with the town of Wilmington. So every town has its opportunities, they all have their different personalities. Again, I'm a, I'm a people person, so I'm going to want to get to know the various town managers and those individuals on a, on a more frequent basis. I'm not going to be in, in front of them all the time, but here's what we're doing, here, you know, does this make sense? I, you know, here's, here's the next meeting, here's the next milestone. So I, at the end of the day, you know, my philosophy or my approach is we're here to serve the towns. More importantly, we're here to serve the customers and the towns and the town representatives, you know, the town leadership are part of that group. So I, I like getting stuff done at the end of the day.
I guess I just wasn't clear on the part about how the board of commissioners can support a positive company culture.
Um, well, so I, I, I think we're at a transition point relative to the board of commissioners. You guys, it's, so the board of commissioners are getting a better sense with each discussion that we have, particularly from the outside, you know, what's happening externally and what opportunities are there internally in terms of how we, how we build our network out. There's, you've heard us talk about within territory generation, and there's an economic drive behind that. You know, I, I think, you know, you're continued to support, we've made a huge transition over the past 12 months in terms of our power supply. You guys have been extremely supportive in terms of, you know, asking good questions, you know, making sure we do, you know, environmental justice-type things, but you guys have been very supportive and encouraging to keep us moving in that, in that direction. I, I think at the end of the day, what's going to be important for the next general manager and the board of commissioners is, is sit down and, and share between those groups, you know, what are, what are some of the key things that the board of commissioners would like us to try and accomplish? And what are some of the key things that the general manager envisions need to be accomplished? And kind of lay out a, what I, what I look at, at the board of commissioners doing is setting guardrails and asking the, the RML team to, to, to run the business within those guardrails. And there'll be certain things that you guys are going to see, you know, again, everybody's got a busy, a busy day, there's a lot going on here. You guys will have a perspective that you'll bring to us and, hey, I'm hearing this, or this is a concern, or this is what I'm, you know, this is what we're hearing on the regulatory side. We try and stay real close to the regulatory side by def, we have to by definition, it's changing quickly. But I think for you guys, you can also be a voice to bring us back in terms of, here's what we're hearing on outside. But I, I think the idea of, here's what we need, here's, here's what's going to be important going forward. It's not just a one-time snapshot, it's going to be ongoing basis, but I, I think the idea of the, the collaboration between the commissioners and the, the general manager and the rest of the staff, not just the general manager, is going to be helpful.
Okay.
I have a quick follow-up on that. With respect to communicating with the towns, obviously there's, to deal with that late afternoon peak that everything's getting later and later.
Yes.
That part of it is an engineering solution with batteries, with
Yep.
peakers, with west-facing solar, but also part of it, or a lot of it, is behavioral.
Yes. Yes.
So, and that means educating and getting how many hundreds or thousands of people to do things.
Yeah.
How do we, you, or how does one, or how do you engage with towns and town committees to involve them in that effort of that behavioral piece?
Yeah.
Which is free.
Right, so, right, the, the least expensive cost of energy is the one you didn't use, right?
Switched it off.
Turn it, turn it off, or turn it down, or, or make the adjustment. Um, a cou, a couple of things, and you, you saw a little of that in some of my notes on the second page, um, that the use of energy with electrification is going to increase, it'll, it'll probably double, you know, in the next 30 years, and the cost of energy will probably also double. Again, 30 years seems like a long time. Um, part of electrification is electric vehicle growth. So one of the things that we've talked about before is, you know, how do you set the rates to encourage people to, electric vehicle charging is a new behavior. I mean, there's some of us that, that charge on a regular basis, but for the, most of the population, it's relatively new. Um, where I'm going with the, the comment is, there'll be new behaviors, but I think the other piece is, um, give the customers more than the tools. There, so we're actually, so what we championed and what we're working on literally right now is a mobile app for our customers. And the intention is just to get the ball rolling and started, so that we basically put the controls in their hand, but not just the control, but also the feedback, right? And part of this MDM system, that I mean, you might have talked about AMI MDM system is going to be part of the foundation that allows us to do that. But the customer can say, look, I, you know, it's, well, now it's not good, you know, so if I say it's May, you know, May 3rd or May 2nd, right? So it's, it's May 15th, right? And I'm three-quarters of the way through what I normally would use, you know, maybe I need to make some adjustments. So there's that feedback mechanism, or it's going to be a peak day, right? I mean, hey, I didn't see the note, I didn't see the, the alert, but I might get alert on my phone. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to broaden the communication more different places for the customers to see what's going on and say, hey, this is a particularly important time to reduce your load, and then give them, and give them the tools to do it. There's, some of this mobile app stuff, um, again, we're still early in the process, right? We had a couple, we, we laid out a specification, um, we've had a couple of meetings with some potential developers, but our intention this year is to get, you know, the beta version of this mobile app. It's, it's one piece
Yeah.
of a broader communication, um, the communication manager that we're going to hire, um, we're going to, we're going to be more aggressive in terms of outbound communication. And again, you know, we'll do the email, I mean, we're going, we're going to do more pieces to let them know what's going on. And then I think the other thing, Commissioner, is let them know the reason behind it. So just more frequent, you know, our, my personal view is that most people have a very short attention span. Give it to me, and again, you can see the, you can see the way I structured my notes, you know, minimal paragraphs, right? Three paragraph lines, but just give me the, give me the core meat, right? What do I need to know? And people are going to be interested because what used to be, hey, just auto pay my bill because it's on average $125 a month, and not that I don't care about it, but it's not a big deal, when it's $250 or $400 a month, they're going to care about it. So part of our goal is to say, here's the things you can do differently going forward. And then other stuff that we do, you know, on the metrocation side, but also the efficiency side, you know, we have the appliance rebates, and we have a bunch of rebate programs, so making that rebate program also modify the behavior as well. We have a very unique opportunity, I think, at RMLD. We have enough resources to lay out a strategy and a plan, to help encourage, to, to, to think through what things can customers do, and now we're trying to put in place, you know, with the rates incentive, and now we're going to try and put in place what things can they do. So back to the towns, you know, more communications with the towns, they've got their website, they've got their communication channels, so, so synchronize more and more stuff. So when we publish it, it's not only us going out, but they're going to see it three or four places. Well, that's right, I forgot, I got to make sure I do something. So there's, there's the communication to the customers, the towns will be in, again, a mechanism to make that communication happen. Those are some thoughts of, well, not thoughts, those are things we're, we're already starting to do, and we're going to try and accelerate those. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Can I follow up with a question on that? And it's one of my pet projects, the sustainability, what is your thoughts on a possible sustainability director being part of the department?
Within RMLD?
Within RMLD that covers the four towns. Where we, where you're talking about outreach to the different towns, is the possibility of a sustainability director being, being employed by the department?
Uh, I think, I think it'd be great to have it be an RMLD individual. So right now, RMLD is primarily electricity. Um, so when we think about, one of the things we know to, to think about, Commissioner, is, you know, what's, what's the breadth of the sustainability? But if, if that person's role is to help set direction, but more importantly, be a part of the communication mechanism, um, because we have tremendous resources here between our different departments, there's a lot of capability in terms of making recommendations and suggestions in terms of things the town should be doing. And right now, we're, we're resource constrained. Um, I think there's a, there's a definite role, and I would definitely want to admit, except I, I have to be careful of absolutes, I would strongly urge us to do it within RMLD as opposed to any individual town role, in my personal opinion.
Could, could I ask a follow-up? It's a little, little bit different. I know Phil asked a question about how to incorporate the, the accounting and economics of a business, but on the reverse side, how would you incorporate the engineering operations processes and procedures and personnel, you know, as a, as a GM? How would you, you know, it's very, I don't know your background, relative to that portion?
So I'm, I'm a double E background.
Yep.
Right? I've, I've installed gen systems, I, I've done design work, um, so I'm technically astute, but I'm, I'm, my role right here is not the E and O director. Um, I'm deeply involved with a couple of the projects with the E and O group, um, one being the primary metering group, there's a lot of details associated with that, a combination of policies and technology. Um, I, I envision, so one of the things that we are going to see, that I'm going to push for, um, in whatever role I'm in as long as I'm at RMLD, is more in-territory generation. So, and, and storage to, to the ability for us, and you have seen, right? We've got 30 megawatts that we've queued up, we've got plans, um, the engineering director and I have, and, and the assistant director have, you know, we've worked together, lay out the plans, here's what we're going to do, here's the timing. We have more work to do to make those a reality, we've got the first one started, which is great. Um, but that within-territory generation, um, is going to have an implication in terms of how the network gets built out, because now it's not just a distribution network, right? We've got, we've got two-way flows going through, um, with the EV charging, so EV, air source heat pumps is basically, is going to move the whole curve up. You know, we have basically a profile, a load profile from midnight to noon to midnight, and we're, we're going to try and fill that midnight and that, you know, overnight, so that the curve is more flat. Um, the air source heat pumps is just going to move the curve up. The EV thing, um, as we've talked about before, right, an average customer, average retail customer is 800 KWH. And a typical car that drives 12,000, 12,500 miles a year is 380, almost 400. So it's almost half. So the implications for our network in terms of just load cap and carrying capability is going to be important. Um, there'll be a lot of discussions, we've already started the discussions in terms of, you know, here's what's coming down the road. I mean, we, we discussed the load profile, et cetera, on just the electrification associated with EVs. The second piece, um, that is not in the next five years, but maybe five to 10, is going to be using all of those EV batteries as part of our peak management program, another mechanism of storage, and putting together the rates and programs and incentives to allow people, so there's, there's the motivation to do it, and then having the network allow us to do it. The other piece, uh, that's going to be important in terms of working with the E and O group is on the metering, right? And so the metering is, you know, at the end of the day, we sell kilowatt hours, right? And so, um, in order to give the customers the, the feedback in terms of here's where they are in a month, here's where they are at this particular moment, um, here's, here's recommendations of things they can do. Again, we want to keep the control in the customer, um, but the intelligence that's going to be built into our distribution network is going to be significant over the next five to 10 years, and that's going to be a lot of coordination. So the GM needs to be able to have a vision in terms of what the network looks like, doesn't have to design every last line, doesn't have to design every last transformer, but has to lay out, here's what's coming down the road. Um, so that's, that's how I envision working closely. At, at the end of the day, the, the distribution network is our delivery vehicle, delivery mechanism. And it's not just delivering electricity, it's also the communication back. So there's a whole communicate, besides communication to the customer, there's a network communication built into the, into our network. And again, the, the AMI MDM system is just a piece of it.
Thank you. I just wanted to capture what the it was in there about, uh, on the EV charging, was there some vision of like, actually the utility having an ability to, to start or stop the charging of a car?
No, the, um,
We're just encouraging them.
So we're, we're going to encourage, so through rates, and we've talked a little about this with, with the A3, which, um, at the time, it's in the queue, um, we're going to motivate them financially in terms of when they should and shouldn't, but we will never prevent them from not being able to charge.
Right.
They will be economically motivated to be cautious in certain times. The thing that I was going toward is where the store, the batteries that are built into the EVs, while the EV is plugged into the network
Right.
instead of charging the vehicle, it would discharge.
I see, I, so, so it would be, there'd be something happening here to pull, with some incentives, to pull and use their battery as a
Yeah, well, it, it'll go back, so the network needs to handle the two-way communication, but the customer needs to signal, and so there's a couple of different ways to do it. They can, they can opt in and say, hey, look, you know, I'm willing to do 20% of my remaining battery, or what, what, we'll lay it out, that they will participate, but when you have, you know, so we have, um, uh, so we have 26,000 residential meters, and, you know, we're estimating somewhere between 30,000 and 50,000 vehicles in our network. And, you know, you start adding a couple KW here and a couple KW there, it becomes significant. So the, the, the goal is, going back to Commissioner Coulter's question, is to use that, that asset, that combination of assets, a whole bunch of them, think about it as a swarm, as, as part of our load management program.
As a distributed battery, you mean?
Yeah, think about it as a distributed battery, yeah.
I don't know any util, is any utility doing that now?
A lot of people are talking about it. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a pipe dream.
Sorry, getting it down in the weeds here.
No, but it's a, it's a, it's a, this is part of the fascination of what we get to do here at RMLD. I mean, literally, these are the things we get to build that are not the traditional utility. And at the end of the day, you know, we, we allow ourselves, enable the customers to be more and more non-carbon, yet not, yet do it in an economically reasonable way. And, you know, back to Commissioner Pacino's question about the economics, at the end, at the end of the day, um, you know, we sell KWH, but we sell them with dollars, right? And people don't have limited, unlimited, you know, ability, nor do we. So we have to, you know, one of the challenges, and I think I put that in some of this, is I've got a, I've got a track record of being able to prioritize what's critically important and things that we'd like to do, and some things we have to push off, but some things we can't push off.
Well, this might be a good time to ask the final question.
Great.
To show that, why do you want this job? Why did you leave? You are the best candidate for this position, and then at the end of that, is there anything left that you just want to tell us tonight?
Um, why do I want, so, yes, I want the job. I'll, I, I, I'm applying for the general manager position at RMLD. Um, I'm, I'm excited about it, I am fascinated with the opportunity, um, I think I have clarity in terms of where we need to take the organization, not that I have all the answers, um, but I, I have a clear direction. Um, I think I've got the credibility and respect of most of the team members here, not like the vast majority of the people here, but also those outside, right? You saw in, in my application, I had some recommendations from other GMs of, of other innovative utilities that, that understand what it is involved in terms of being a GM, that have worked with me and know me. Um, I talked before about the drive and the enthusiasm and the energy. I mean, I, I, I don't see this as a startup, but I see this as another company that we can, we can, because of the opportunity that's presented externally, we can take the work that's already been, been done and accelerate that to create, I'll call it, a new RMLD, um, one that, um, most importantly serves the customers, but also one that has a great reputation. If you want to work at an MLP, you should go work at, at RMLD. Like, and again, I, the reputation isn't the critical piece, but that's going to be the end result. Um, I think the experiences that I've had in the other industries and the different roles, whether it's in a customer-facing role, whether it's in a technical role, whether it's in a product development role, um, you know, raising capital, setting up the initial books, setting up the initial chart of accounts, um, I understand accounting, I'm, you know, not a CPA, um, I know how to manage cash, if you're a small company, you've got to manage cash. Um, I, I just think I have a, well, I'm confident that I have the skillset necessary to lead this organization, and a vision to point in, in the, into the future, and a passion for it. I'd be honored to serve.
Thank you.
John, you in for him, John?
Another minute?
John, anything else? We have 11 minutes.
Since we, since we have time, let me ask, let me ask you a question. It came out in the paper a couple of days ago that Mass Save
Nope, John? Phil has a question.
Yeah. It came out in the papers the other day that Mass Save has, uh, has been subject to fraud by two individuals. If that were one of the vendors that you had here, and I only ask this question, we have time, um, how would you deal with that?
Um, so I guess, so step one is to put processes in place ahead of time to avoid the fraud, um, and back to your original question about working closely with finance, a lot of things that we did to refine the, take, you know, the big ticket item is air source heat pumps, right? Because those are several, you know, the average rebate is $3,000 a rebate, as opposed to $50 for, uh, an appliance. Um, so we're closely, um, with the, the accounting team in terms of looking, you know, making sure that the process, um, tries to prevent the fraud, and then if we uncovered the fraud, we actually make sure that it, you know, quantify, quantify that was really there. And then if it is really there, um, a couple of things, you know, one is we plug the hole as quickly as we possibly could, right? And then we get advice in terms of, um, what we would need to do from a, a legal perspective to where, you know, where possible reclaim those dollars. Um, uh, and, you know, at the end of the day, um, you know, whether it's the AG office or whatever, but, but I don't want us to be the primary prosecutor, but I, I'd want to make sure that we take care of the customers, but those kind of individuals be prosecuted so that when people come in and try and do something with RMLD, we're no BS. You know, we, we don't have tolerance for that. So that's part of the reputation. So a combination of process ahead of time, um, really uncover what's really going on, on, ongoing basis, look at the data, you know, I mean, it doesn't just suddenly, oh, my gosh, I never saw this, um, you know, hopefully keep our eyes open in terms of trends, but those are the kind of things that we probably do. I mean, I have to look at it digitally, but that's kind of a broad framework. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you both.
So now that we're all back, Wendy Markowitz, Director of Finance, is our third and last candidate, and she, um, might want to know, because I'm not sure how I didn't tell the others that we have 78 minutes per question, five or six questions for you to answer, and at the end, there should be some leftover time for follow-up questions, which also might come throughout.
Sure.
And for you to just tell us anything at the end that you didn't get to tell us during the hour.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first question's from Commissioner Pacino.
Okay. The seniority has its privileges.
Yeah.
So, explain a time where you had to make it, made it happen to complete an urgent task and deliver results, what challenges did you have to overcome? How would you relate this experience to being the interim general manager at the RMLD going forward?
Okay. So explain a time that I had to overcome a challenge in a timely fashion, right? Okay. So first thing that comes to mind would be COVID, okay? We were, um, in a situation where everybody was dispersed, if you will, and our day-to-day doesn't stop. We have to pay employees, we have to pay vendors, uh, we have to get the wires out for power supply, um, we have to sign bids, there's everything that has to, has to happen, and our daily, our deadlines are daily in order to meet it to the next day. So you had a capacity situation where you can only have so many people in the building. So you had a capacity situation where you can only have so many people in the building. And we have enough work for an entire staff. And you need all of the cooperation of the entire department to get everything done because you need timed, timely, signed timesheets and signed invoices and whatnot. And we were not paperless at the time. So in that time, we decided immediately to empower the staff. So I discussed it with the general manager, empowered the accounting staff to move forward with an idea that they had had for quite some time and implement this paperless system with electronic signatures. That was the only way that we were going to be able to make this happen. Now, we did have limited staff in the office. And of course, we had to utilize the limited staff and we had to make shift in the meantime while we were getting it, while we were getting it up and running. And of course, this always hiccups along the way when you're implementing something new. But we did not miss a paycheck. We did not miss paying a vendor. You know, everything went out timely. And I would consider that quite a challenge, especially with the day-to-day deadlines that we have to meet with town hall, with the signatures, and the flow chart of the signatures. So that's, that's definitely, it was very successful. And was there a follow-up to that?
Yeah, the follow-up was, the second half of the question was, how would you relate this experience to becoming the interim general manager?
Okay, how I would relate that?
Going forward?
I would relate that to thinking on your feet, being confident in the moment, and being able to use professional judgment to, you know, make something happen. The ability to empower the staff, know, know the value of the staff that you have around you and the assets that we have, and utilize those assets, because they are our biggest assets. Utilize them to make the decisions that we need to make going forward with anything in the interim general manager situation.
Commissioner Stempak has a second question.
Hi, Wendy. What do you see as the one or two major challenges behind RMLD's failures? And how might you address those challenges?
Okay. So one of the challenges is, right now, employee morale, I would say. That's one of our biggest challenges. The employee morale is not at the level that it needs to be. And right now is a time that we really need to reignite the workforce. We need to find a way to, to enable and motivate. And in order to do that, we need to listen. Okay, so if we listen to our workforce and we understand what their challenges are, why do they come to work every day? What motivates them to be here? Then we can reignite that for them as a team, together. And, and I'm not saying it's going to happen overnight. That's not what I'm saying at all. But I'm saying this is what needs to happen in order to bring about a change at this level. We also have a situation where we are understaffed and we are losing employees. And, you know, a lot of it is for natural progression and succession and retirement. But we're also losing employees due to employee morale. So I think by motivating the current staff, word-of-mouth advertising is the best, the best way to advertise, okay? So by motivating the current staff and re-examining the qualifications of the current staff, maybe putting them in positions that we didn't think at the time they were, they were suited for. Maybe they have improved. Maybe they've, you know, grown and become more educated. And maybe they are qualified now to be in different positions. And then they may be qualified to mentor and coach people below them. And we could fill positions. And this would cause a momentum, I believe. And I really just think it would, it would cause a spark among, among the workforce and a togetherness that could, you know, change things.
And what makes you the best person to handle that? The second part of the question.
Sure.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't catch that. Sorry, John. What makes me the best person to handle that? Well, I can tell you that I possess integrity. And I work in a way of delivering information in a direct, transparent communication way. Everybody understands where I'm coming from when I speak. This, this is me. This is it. When you ask me a question, I'm going to give you a direct answer. I'm going to be honest and upfront with you. I have an ability to read my audience quickly and understand what their strengths are and play to their strengths. I also have, I build relationships. At every, every corner of this building, I build relationships. And I connect with people. And I take pride in that connection. And I build trust with, with the employees. And then you understand the value that they possess. And then you understand the tools that you have in front of you. What was it? That's it, right, John?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question we had is, since we sit on here on the DS in person or virtually, to describe, you know, kind of your typical workday, you come in. And how is it that you interact with your colleagues and direct reports in the workplace? What is your style? Like, walk us through what that looks like and how you operate with your colleagues?
Sure. So depending on, if I walk in and I have a meeting to get to right away, I usually take the meeting and I immediately interact with the staff that's closest to me just because of the location of where they are. So that would be my accounting team. Immediately, you know, good morning, how's it going? Everybody good? You know, you need anything right away type of situation? Let them know, communicate with them. I have a meeting. But I'll, you know, as soon as my meeting's over, I'll get back to you, you know? And if I don't have a meeting, log into my computer and immediately walk down, say hello to the rest of my staff. I have billing. I have credit collections. I have customer service, you know, kind of make the rounds, if you will, to make sure that everybody is addressed. And, and just to know there's, there's an awareness that, you know, I know who's here. They know I'm here. Everybody okay? Everything going on? You know, typically walk down to the general manager, say hello real quick, HR. I kind of make the rounds within the business. And, you know, in the meantime, if I have priorities, I have to shift that. And sometimes it is unfortunate that I don't get out of my office until later in the day if I have a meeting after meeting. And I do, and I do work with that. And I do apologize every single time. And typically, at the end of the day, when I'm, when I'm leaving, when my staff is leaving, typically I say thank you to each one of them as they leave. Is that the full question?
Yeah, we just wanted to get a sense of the management style and how you build. I guess part of that would be getting back to the, you mentioned, you emphasized the morale issue. And so how, how does, how does your style affect morale, in your view? Or how do you work in your own daily? That's kind of what this is linked up with.
Like communicating, exactly, right. Right, getting off, getting off my chair and communicating directly with my direct reports specifically.
How many direct reports do you have?
I have 12 direct reports.
Follow-up? I'm going to ask the finance questions. Your interaction with the engineering folks?
Sure.
And also the power supply folks?
Sure.
Can you detail that?
You want, you want me to tell you how I interact with them?
Yes.
Sure, okay.
Yes.
So my, my position is very unique because most of the financial and business decisions and business transactions come through my desk. So specifically engineering, you know, we're talking about construction jobs, advanced aided construction, joint, joint poll. So working with them day in and day out is not necessarily me particularly, but it is my team. And I'm very aware of what my team is working on at all times. I am in the know as far as all emails. I do not get my hands into everything, but I ask my team always to make me aware so that I can quickly jump in and solve a problem if necessary. So day-to-day with engineering is not specifically with me, but it is with my whole team. And power supply, similar. So we, you know, we have these power supply contracts. We have to meet the deadlines on the wire payments. And reconciling power supply is quite a big deal. And I work closely with my team to work closely with the IRD team to make sure that the processes and procedures are being followed through and that everything is working timely. And any questions, I just come right out and ask the question, typically through email. So that way we have a clear understanding of the response. Or if I go and have a conversation, then I document it by email to make sure we're all on the same page. Yeah, so it's not always day-to-day, Phil, because it depends on the situation.
Move on to Commissioner Coulter's question.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Question four, talent acquisition and management is becoming increasingly difficult. How would you inspire all employees to ensure that they feel valued and work as a team? What steps would you follow to ensure securing the best hires to fill vacancies? And finally, how would you incentivize those employees to stay? So three parts. I can repeat that if you need to. It's because it's a three-part, right?
Should I write it down? Hold on one second. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. All right, so talent acquisition and management. So I spoke of this at the beginning. It is becoming difficult. And how would I inspire employees to ensure that they feel valued? So that's the number one thing that I think we need to do here, is we need to remind the employees that people first, okay? Every organization, people come first. And sometimes there's a different opinion of that because sometimes people think customers come first. Well, I can tell you that without the people of this organization, you have no customers. So it is important that our biggest assets understand their value. How would I create value? How would I show them that I value them? I would show them I value them by being the leader they need. First by being, by showing them my integrity and my truth. And by using my transparent, direct communication so that they understand exactly where I'm coming from. By making connections and building relationships with them. I would, I want them to remember why they work here, what it is we do, what inspired them to come here. It can't be just the benefits. It has to be a reason why you came here to work at the RMLD. So I want to bring that out of them. I want to ask, I want to remind them and motivate them and engage them to tell me, why, why are we here? Let's, you know, let's remind ourselves, let's remember what we do, what this incredible thing, power, right, that you can't touch, that we provide, that everybody can't live without. Let's remember how amazing that is. This is what we do here, okay? So you can't necessarily quantify value. It's, you know, it's qualitative. So it's, it's hard to, we can't put a number on that. I'm sorry to tell you that. I can't, I can't answer it with a number, is my point. So just motivating the staff and I think empowering middle management to make decisions. I feel like sometimes we're a little paralyzed because we're stuck in, in an area of maybe processes and procedures. And we've grown, we've grown from that. I think it's time to empower the staff so that they can, that they can make decisions, that they're qualified to make. And we can move at a different pace, and that will engage them and motivate them. That was the first question, right?
Yes.
So that they will automatically, they will automatically be more of a cohesive team if they're all working in the same direction. What steps would I follow to ensure securing the best hires to fill vacancies? Well, as I mentioned, I think the number one thing we need to do is reevaluate the current staff. I think we need to look at the open positions and see what talent we have in-house. What are we missing? Are we missing anything? Are we, you know, selling anybody short, not on purpose? But maybe we overlooked that they had, you know, further education or more experience under their belt, what have you. So that's the first step I think we need to take. And then if we can, fill some positions in-house, and most likely it's a position that's higher, obviously. And then from there, empower them once again to help us. I want everybody's help. I want everybody's help to move in that direction. So if you're in a higher position, you're going to want to fill that position with somebody that you value or somebody that's going to contribute to the RMLD's success. So by empowering them and giving them the opportunity to take part in this process, I think will help that situation. And of, and of course, we have to make sure, and I know HR does an amazing job with putting the ads out there and making sure that we're on the right platform. So we will have to look at that again, make sure that we're on every platform that we feel as though is worth the money to be on. And how do you incentivize talent to stay? Again, incentivizing talent to stay is not necessarily a number. It's a feeling, in my opinion. It's, it's a feeling of wanting to be here, why you're here, what you do, who you work with. So it's, it's the overall bringing in a leadership that, that I would want in a leader. Bringing that honest, direct communication, I feel as though that would be incentive.
Thank you.
Follow-up? So my question, and this is a low question here. How do you visualize your, your vision of, you know, incentivizing and adding value and dealing with the unions here in the department?
That's a good question, Phil. So you, everybody knows we have three, three unions, right? And my team is kind of a gatekeeper, okay? Because we have to ensure that every employee here is being paid what they're entitled to be paid. So we have to follow that contract and make sure that we troubleshoot and, and we continue to ask questions so that we have the right information. Say the question, I'm sorry again, Phil. I apologize.
Question was, how does your visualize, how does your vision square with the unions that are here in the department?
Okay.
Yeah.
How does my vision, well, I think my vision is communication and a connection and building relationships. I believe we need to build a better relationship with the unions, okay? It doesn't always have to be sitting at the negotiation table. I think if we get a better understanding of what each union, each unit expects or wants in the workforce, then we can work with them day-to-day and not necessarily wait till it's negotiation time to bring up everything that they want all, all year long, everything that we think needs to be addressed or resolved. Maybe creating, and we've already done this, the general manager has already brought this on, creating some, some working groups. And maybe we do more of that, okay? And we attack the big issues of what really is on your mind? What really is your pain point? What do you want to get across to, to the RMLD to better incentivize you exactly, but not necessarily with money? It's, it's not always about money. What, like sick buyback, for example, right? That's a huge incentive, okay? Yes, it's about money at the end of the day, but it's an incentive for people not to take sick days. That's an incentive. So can I point out an incentive right now that I would say absolutely? Adding, adding people so that people don't feel so strapped for time and maybe stressed in their position, so increasing the numbers in the workforce. What else can we do to incentivize? Yeah, I'm not, it's not coming to me right now, Phil. Sorry.
Have you dealt with unions?
Have I dealt with unions?
Yes.
I deal with, I deal with them every single day. Because of the fact that we have to make sure that we pay them accordingly. But I am heavily involved in the negotiations and daily labor relations. I work heavily with HR. And we are a cohesive group to make sure that we understand the contract language when it's brought to our attention of maybe there's a discrepancy in what somebody, you know, perceives the language to be versus what we see it to be. Because there are a lot of areas in those contracts that are gray. I would say myself and my team are probably the most well-versed in... I would say myself and my team are probably the most well-versed in the contracts in this organization. So yes, we deal with them at a very consistent level.
Well, I'll just ask about employees, ensuring they feel valued. What about education? Is it something that they ask for?
I think it's something that they, once again, I don't feel like they're motivated at this time to necessarily ask for it. And those who do ask for it, they are receiving the education and maybe that's on the RMLD to identify more of education. But we do have career development plans and education is outlined on the career development plans as to, you know, what's the next level of progression. But sometimes it's not always about progression and it's maybe just, you know, getting refresher on best business standards or, you know, for example, you know, getting, understanding how to deal with conflict in the workplace or, you know. So we, we do identify it and we, you know, work with the employees who bring it to our attention more than putting it on them. And it's something that we need to look back at and say, okay, we have to start this back up again because we were actually going in a really good direction with education. And I think we just got really bogged down with COVID and, you know, everything that was going on and the restrictions of COVID, of course. And I don't think, I really don't think employees feel the value out of virtual training as they do in, in-class training. You know what I mean? So, and I don't feel as though they feel like it's a break from work either because there's a lot of interruptions and whatnot. So I think it's time now with COVID gone, or, you know, for the most part, that we take, take another look and identify some valuable and productive education areas for each group.
Anything else, Bob?
No. Thank you.
So my question is, how would you affect the culture change in any organization? How do you see the relationship between the general manager and a healthy company culture? How can the Board of Commissioners support a positive company culture with the four towns serviced by RMLD?
Okay. I know, you need this to write, though, don't you? Okay. No, okay. Okay, how would I affect the culture change in the organization? Yeah, it goes back to engaging, motivating, reigniting the workforce because I really believe in that. I believe adding value to the workforce and making sure that they understand their value. So when I sent out an email this, this past winter and I sent it to my team because we were doing, we were doing employee evaluations. And what I wrote in there is, I want to hear your value. Everybody here adds value to this organization. I want you to tell me your value. So I think it's important that they speak their value, that we listen to it, but that we pull it out of them as well. How do I see my relationship between a GM and a company, and a healthy company culture? I see my dynamic and effective leadership, my ability to communicate and connect with people. That is absolutely 100% what's going to create a healthy company culture here. And how can the Board of Commissioners support a positive company culture? Well, you know, that's, thank you for asking that because that is one of the questions I wanted to ask you. I wanted to, not that I'm going to say what I have to say, but I wanted to ask all of you, what is it that you want to see in the change for the RMLD? So how can you, the board, support a positive company culture? You can support a positive company culture by helping the RMLD understand if the current vision and mission is exactly the way that we need to be going. Now, of course, the vision and the mission is strategic and we need to, you know, sit down and identify if we're going in the right path. But if we're not going in the right path, we're not creating a healthy culture. People need a vision to connect to. And if they don't have a vision to connect to, then it's not going to be healthy. So I think reevaluating that and making sure the vision is on target and making sure that it's the vision that, that you see for the RMLD as well as leadership here and connecting, educating the employees to understand the vision and then connecting them to that vision. I believe that's what brings about your, your positive company culture aspect here. And how is that going to serve the four towns? The same way. So the vision is what's going to drive this organization. And with that, with the vision, it's affecting the people and it's affecting the planet and it's affecting the profit and it's affecting all the communities because it affects all of our stakeholders. So whatever that vision is, the employees here need to attach to it and we need to deliver that information to all the communities so that they understand what we're working for, what we're striving to accomplish here.
And how do you think they should deliver that?
How do I think we should deliver that message? Well, I mean, always, we always provide educated information at the select boards, but maybe we need to present in such a way that we take, that we say, no, this is, this is what we want to deliver. And maybe we bring all the, all the, I don't know how many people, I'm just saying, maybe we bring the communities together, okay? I know we have the CAB, which is, which is representative of the communities, but maybe we reach further than that and we bring, you know, the select board or whomever is at the, in a, in a position to hear us and, you know, understand our message. We bring them together. Maybe we, let me think about that for a second. Just express, express our, express the, what we're trying to deliver and, and hold ourselves accountable to what we're trying to deliver. Make milestones and say, this is what we are going to accomplish here. And we want to understand from the towns as well. What is it that they, what, what does the community want from us that maybe we're missing? And maybe that's where we start. We start with, what are we missing from you in order to implement it into our vision? So the only way to do that is communication and, you know, speaking with.
Still, still a third, no, you have plenty of time.
Okay.
Let me ask, let me ask some follow-up questions here. Couple, couple of things. You talk about talking with the town and working with the town. What are your thoughts on the economic development of the property behind us and this property?
What are my thoughts in regards to, should we do it? Should we not? Is that what you're asking?
Any thoughts you'd like to come up with?
Okay. So, okay, so I'm not, I'm not involved at the depth of understanding exactly. I have some knowledge of what's happening. I think it's a great opportunity for the town of Reading to take over this property so that they can, you know, beautify it first of all and, you know, want to bring more residents or more, more business to this community. I think that's a win-win for everybody because that's going to help the town, that's going to help the RMLD. I'm absolutely in favor of change in any which way. So to, for us to be relocated, I don't, I don't see a problem as long as, you know, it's strategically and methodically thought out and where is our staff going to be? Where's our fleet going to be? You know, how is it going to affect the timing of our service? You know, we need to be very responsible in the decision-making in the location of where we, where we relocate to. I know this has been talked about for quite some time, but I think it's a fantastic idea.
So again, how about the property behind us? If they can connect in from the other side at this point is what the thought process wants to say.
If who can connect, I'm sorry, Phil.
Well, if they connect in from the, from behind us here, there's a possibility of connecting into what's behind us here.
Sure.
As opposed to coming in from our Ash Street.
Will we still be here or not?
Good question. Don't know. Don't know. Your thoughts?
If they connect, okay, I mean, okay.
Don't open any question.
So if, if we stay here and they connect from behind us, it's a much better opportunity for the RMLD, for the traffic and the fleet of vehicles and whatnot, although we could use another entrance if we had to. I think boosting the economy and, you know, changing, you know, we have some warehouse storages out here. I think beautifying that is, it's a benefit. I don't see any downside to any of this at all, except it needs to be strategically thought out and it needs to be done in a responsible manner.
And then I'm going to talk, ask about my pet project here. What are your thoughts on possibly the department having a sustainability director?
What are my thoughts on the department having a sustainability?
Director on, on staff?
A sustainability director. So somebody that you want dedicated specifically for that.
Right.
Outside of the IRD.
Well, no, he'd be part of the department. So there'd be energy involved in this too, energy conservation and so forth.
Right. I believe that the staff that we're building in the Integrated Resource Department can, can sustain that already. So we could, we could, we could develop a position within this idea that for the, for the amount of individuals we already have in, in plans for IRD, we would just have to rearrange the thought process of what the positions should look like. But I think it's become such a, such a very high demanding topic and responsibility for the RMLD that we certainly need some dedication to it because it takes over, as we've seen, it takes over almost every meeting discussing the sustainability and, you know, where we're moving. And I think if we have a dedicated staff person specifically for that, I think would be beneficial, move us in the right direction.
I'm good.
I have one follow-up. Your expertise, expertise as accounting and I'm kind of still a little Phil-stunned here. He always asks the engineering people about accounting. So I'm asking an accounting person about engineering and operations. Now, how would you, you know, your, your background is finance.
Yeah.
How would you approach the engineering and operations aspect as, as a GM?
So how I would approach it? So yes, there's no secret here that my, I have a business degree and with a concentration in accounting. And I, I've been in this environment for over 10 years. So I'm not going to say that I can use poll formant or I can, you know, understand what it takes to set a poll. And I'm not going to say that whatsoever. But I understand the dynamics of what it takes for the RMLD to do that. So what I would do is I would depend heavily on the expertise that we have to make that happen. So if I, if we had a situation, a challenge or a decision to make, I would enlist in, excuse me, in the expertise that we have to provide information. And then I would use professional judgment to understand if the information is valid or not. And depending on the, say it's a crisis situation or whatnot, if we needed to bring outside expertise, we would have to, that's fine. But for the day-to-day, I would depend on the expertise that we have here to give me the recommendations that they see fit. And, and it would be a collaboration, though. It wouldn't just be one person because we would have to make sure that everybody's on the same page and understanding the message or, or the deliverable, if you will.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Well, we talked about culture and the four companies. So lastly, and we have plenty of time, I know you've kind of already answered this, but just to recap or anything that you've left unsaid, why do you want this job?
Yes.
And why do you believe you are the best candidate for this position?
Thank you for asking. Okay, so why do I want this job? I want this job because I believe I possess the leadership skills and abilities in who I see as a leader. I have, my education, my experience, my expertise has prepared me for this position. I have been in this environment, in this organization for over 10 years. I understand the value that we have in the employees here. I possess a, the integrity, as I, as I spoke about, and the direct transparent communication that it takes to lead this organization in the right path. And I, as I mentioned, I have a unique position in that I work day in, day out with the general manager on business and financial decisions. So I'm already in a situation where I'm not going to say everything because that's, that's not true, but most everything comes through my eyes before it even gets to the general manager's desk. So I, I've already seen what it takes. Now, as you mentioned, operations. I believe I am a very strong relationship builder. I connect with people and that is what is going to provide the RMLD with the success we need to move in any direction. It's going to help us overcome challenges. It's going to help us enlist new, new hires. It's going to help us in every direction. And I want this position because, you know, I started here in '94 as a co-op and I came back for the people. I came back because I knew that this organization was filled with very valuable people. And I came back for what we do. That's what motivated me, the people and what it is we provide here. And now I, I want the opportunity to lead in, in the, in the way that I do in every day-to-day with my current team. And I want another, I want an ability to connect with people at a different level and prove to this organization that we have what it takes to move forward and to be successful and build employee morale.
Thank you. So that.
How much time we got? How much time we got? 20 minutes? Okay. So let me ask you a question. Mass Save, a couple of days ago, actually discovered they had fraud. What would you do with any of our vendors, if you discovered that with any of our vendors at this point?
What would I do if I discovered? Can you be a little more like, what do you, when you say they discovered they had fraud, I'm sorry, I'm not.
So basically what they did is they bribed individuals at Mass Save to give contracts. Two individuals, one was a law enforcement officer in another town and his brother. They bribed individuals to get, to get contracts. So what if you, what would you do if you discovered that as the gentleman, as the interim general manager? What, what steps would you take and what would you do?
Okay, so if I, and it affected us specifically, the RMLD?
I don't, I don't know if it affected us or not. I have no idea on that.
No, your question, if you.
If it did affect us, if you found that with any vendor that you, you had.
Okay. So if it affected the RMLD specifically, okay. So I would immediately cease operation with this vendor. I would, I would certainly alert the auditors that I identified fraud because being upfront with the auditors goes a long way. And then I would, you know, I believe in this case, we would have to seek legal counsel to make sure that we take the right steps to mitigate any crisis that could, I mean, fraud can go in any direction. It could, you know, affect customer accounts. It could affect the way we're doing business with the towns and the relationship. It could, you know, alter our, our, what's the word I'm looking for? It could alter our reputation. So I would, we would, we would have to take corrective action through legal in this case because fraud is something that's very serious and it would, it would have to be identified. And I would, I would enlist, you know, legal's advice on what the right steps are to go. But I, we would immediately cease any kind of relationship with this, with this vendor. And we would, I, we would alert the correct parties.
That's fine. I'm good.
And thank you, Wendy Michaelis.
Thank you for the time and the time.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So our future discussion is date is to be decided for a future meeting. We're looking at Thursday, but.
We're in a town meeting, it's continuing on.
But can we just go late to the meeting?
Well, no. I don't believe, under the bylaws, I don't believe you can meet during town meeting.
No. I think you have to.
It tends to be decided.
Town meeting comes first.
Yeah.
Or you can't comply.
We're going to come up with a future date to finalize our discussions. We're going to come up with a future date to finalize our discussions and our decisions. We don't have the date right now, John.
So, can we meet earlier in that evening? I mean, we could meet six o'clock. I mean, can, do we make it six o'clock?
I think you're too late for posting. That's been forty-eight hours, right?
Can we, if we meet?
Well, it's posted.
Posted for seven thirty.
That would be the only change at the time, so, you know, that's probably not.
I, yeah, I'm.
Sounds like it has to be Friday.
Fri- Friday, I, um, I'm not even back until.
Yeah, Friday, September is just a bad day.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm not even back in Reading till after seven.
I mean, the only day that I could probably make is next Monday night, possibly. Tuesday, Monday. Oh, God, I, I hope they're done. Sorry.
I, I'm out Monday night. Um, I can do Tuesday.
Tuesday, I'm, I'm booked Tuesday. I'm sorry, I already got a place to go that night.
What, could you go, uh, do you know?
Um, the place I'm going, six to eight, so. Um, I'm, uh, yeah, I'm like six to eight too.
Could we do a morning?
Uh, no.
Anywhere? Friday, Monday, Tuesday?
Uh.
On Zoom? I don't know.
You could do Wednesday. When, when.
Six to do, do eleventh Wednesday?
Yeah, the eleventh is Wednesday.
I know, I know, if it's in the morning.
Yeah.
Unless it was early.
I could, I could do a little.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Wendy. I got, I could do like, I, I could do one, uh, Wednesday.
I think too, how long are we thinking? So, for this meeting, I think we had planned to do a, it was a regular session followed by executives. We're thinking an hour, quick.
Um, could we do executive sessions first?
Yeah, certainly.
And then?
As long as it's posted, yeah, certainly.
You can't deliberate on candidates, uh, during executive session.
Yeah.
The discussion of candidates has to be an open session.
Right.
Um, well, if, um.
When, when we said we're going to digest tonight and then look, look at our notes and then formulate a, formulate a decision. And then, um, I guess, um, on the format, on, on the, on when we, when we come back, how, how do you want to do that? Do you want to just say, I nominate X?
Well, that's what I thought we would talk about in executive session is without using any names.
Okay.
Exactly what order and the stipend.
Okay.
Then in regular session.
I think you can do that.
John thinks you can do that. I just want to stop at chess. I don't know if you have any thought on it. Having to both order and stipend in executive.
I think that stuff has to be discussed in open session.
So, if, if we have, um, like, how, how we, um, our format and, and delivering response back to the candidate, do we want to have the chair say, all right, I, or the first person who speaks say, I, I'm suggesting X? Who, who would be the first?
Yeah, move, move the microphone closer.
Oh, so, sorry, John. Um.
No, no.
Oh, I know, is, is this better? Can you hear me now? I'm looking for a horizon. I know, I'm only kidding. Um, so, so, John, I was, I was just saying.
Come right over, come right over, come right over.
Yeah, I was just saying. Okay. All right, I was just saying, like, when we come back and we have a, you, it's like just to say you had a suggestion of a candidate, you know, who wants to go first? I, you know, I suggest X as pool of general managers. And how, how do we do that? I, I, you know, do we all say, I did one, two, three, with, where someone say, I say X and then that opens, opens a debate, right? We all could, we all could raise people and then kind of like, uh.
Yeah.
Get voted off the island, right? I say it that way, but we all, and then we all, I, I, I don't like that. I don't like that.
You've been watching too much TV.
I thought we could say in executive session, I'm inclined to offer candidate one, no name, a position. And I'm inclined to offer candidate, say, two, as my second choice. And I'm inclined to offer candidate, say, three, as my third choice. I thought we could say that in executive session.
I'm not sure you can, but I think, no, you can't do that in executive, but you can.
Only open, okay.
Only open session.
But if you do it, just a thought, um, if you do it in terms of listing the candidates and then taking a sort of a second commissioner, a non-particar candidate, and then, uh, if, if we adjust up the emergency process, then we would succeed. You're, you're going to two candidates and you do the same thing over there.
Can you say that again?
Do you mean, John, like, instead of ranking them like one, two, three, you would take each one individually? And let it play out that way?
Uh, right, yes. Exactly. You could vote them individually, send a vote amongst the entire, uh, division. And then, you could limit candidates by doing that. And then do the same thing again with two candidates. Kind of what we did with, uh, your second air, our, uh, chair, right? And what's the kind of what you do yearly?
So, so, a name gets put out first, the five commissioners say.
Yeah, your name.
Yeah, your name. And then if you get, if the first person gets five out of five, it's over.
I think, I think, if I recall from what we did nine years ago, and I think this might be what John is saying, we all just start by saying, here is what, here is what our first choice would be.
Right.
And then, let's say three is the same, then we say, okay, now let's take a vote. And, because then it's clear what the outcome would be. And then you nominate in second and probably we'd all, unless somebody really wanted to vote against it, um, we'd vote. But if it was two, two and one, then, uh, then that doesn't work.
So, you end up, you put up your first candidate?
Is that what you're saying, John? Is that what you were going for?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, each commissioner says what their first choice is.
Right.
We see how that plays out. And even if it's, uh, someone clearly has a majority, we still say what our second choice is.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because if the first, if the first person doesn't accept, the first person may decide not to accept. I've experienced that too.
And so that in, once we go into open session, we could move on.
Right. Because we, we did, we did hire a general man, we did hire a general manager that backed out. That, that moved out.
He was an interim, so I don't think that would be.
He was an, he was an interim and he decided not to go forward. He's no longer in this world, but that's a home of the story.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there should be a one, two and a three. There should be one, two, three. Is how we should do it.
That happens in executive session?
What?
That happens in a second. That happens in open session.
No, that's a regular, that's happened in session.
Yeah, that's open, yeah.
Right, so we each, we each say basically what John said. We each say our number one pick.
Yeah.
And then if that gets the majority vote, then we go to the number two pick. If that gets the majority vote, then you get, that obviously the default is the third.
So, should we have an executive session after the regular?
Yeah, right, to, and to discuss, to discuss the, uh.
You're asking that, right?
The compensation.
Yep, so, yeah.
Still define a date.
I know, so define a date.
So, we, right.
Cole Strange out of the University of Chattanooga.
So, we still need a date.
And we said we wouldn't, then we had already decided we wouldn't do it tonight, so.
I mean, I did, the, the motion is posted, so if you would like to, you have the opportunity.
I'm not, I'm not ready. I'm not ready. How long am I, I want to.
Right, and the agenda is out for Thursday, seven thirty, but it's not going to work out.
What's the date we want to go to?
Want to try to do it for Friday? Just, I know Friday night will not work.
What'd you say, John?
Sure.
Right, yep.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
We agree.
Yeah, I think we, uh.
We agree with that. I, I think some of the credit needs to go to the lady who's sitting up, who's a, who's the president general manager. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, thank, thank you, Colleen.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
Um, I could do Friday afternoon, but I gotta stop at, like, four. I gotta, I couldn't, I couldn't go beyond four o'clock.
We're considering Friday at two thirty and hard stop at four?
Yeah, I mean, we, we should do no more than an hour. No more than an hour to discuss this. We can't, we can't come to a solution within an hour. You know, yeah. Especially we're taking the, taking the extra time, so, yeah. Let's do, let's do the two thirty.
Two thirty Friday?
Yeah.
Two thirty Friday.
So, it will be done by three thirty?
Erica, you'll send, you'll send some invites around to us, I hope.
Yeah, and my only note is, so, town hall is closed on Friday, so if I get that out, I suppose I could revise my Thursday to be Friday. I'm just not sure it would exactly be in with those forty-eight hours, but I can ask them. Or would she?
Well, that, that should be fine. They'll post it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow morning, that's Monday morning.
They don't count Friday as like a.
They don't?
It's a forty-eight hours.
They'll post it tomorrow as soon as you send it in and then it's good, then it's.
Yeah, good for, good for Friday.
Forty-eight hours.
True, okay.
You mean, because it's like a Saturday event, so they don't count it as part of the forty-eight hours?
Yeah.
Well, they, yeah, I know what you're saying. They're not going to count their full workday on Friday as forty-eight because they leave at twelve thirty. That, is that the concern?
Yeah, like, so Friday doesn't count at all towards the forty-eight. It's only, so if we wanted to post something Monday, for example, you can't count Friday as part of that.
Okay, yeah. All right, so, um, so, plant.
Sorry, John?
Friday, two thirty is fine with me.
Yes, Friday, two thirty is fine.
Okay. And that'll be, that'll be a Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why, why you're not?
Well, we don't, we can, I, I think we could talk better in here. Can you come here? Oh, soldier.
I gotta, I gotta work. I gotta, I got a job to do, you know? I have to be Zooming, I have to Zoom in.
It didn't work, okay.
It didn't work, I know. I remember it was like great.
What, Monday afternoon?
I, I, Monday, I got a couple of meetings.
Let's get, we, I think we should be, we should act as quickly as possible. We can't do.
Before the weekend is.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'd like to know before the weekend, you know, whether I'm, I'm celebrating or I'm not, you know, that's.
Okay.
Exactly.
Sure.
Like the teams? Really? Oh, that's good.
If something works great.
Yeah, and John, I'll connect with you too to make sure if we do do Zoom Friday, that you're all good to go and it's smooth. I might have to do it from the car, then come in.
Does everyone have Teams?
I have Teams.
What? You have Teams?
No.
Okay, so.
I'm a Zoom guy.
Google Teams?
You can all, anybody can log into Teams. You don't have to have.
I'm a Zoom guy.
You can use the app or whatever, with a mobile, I'm sorry, the web, the web-based one.
Don't you have to, um, Microsoft Web?
I don't think so.
Why don't you try, maybe try it out with, with Phil on a test.
You can always call it in. Call in, you just want to have the video.
What?
We can try.
So, I'll lend you a call, imagine that.
Um, R C T V does Zoom is the only thing. I don't know if they do Teams, but I can find out, but.
Oh, either way, it can be worked out tomorrow morning, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so, we have to do Zoom for a public meeting? Public meeting?
If you're all attending in person, no.
So, what, the, the.
But it would still be streamed. So, they would, it would have to be like in here and R C T V would stream it through that camera if we didn't do Zoom, because it still has to be live streamed in some way.
Okay.
Okay, but, but it is. But we can use this room to come in live on Friday.
Yep.
Okay. And then we'll figure out the call thing if you're calling.
Move to adjourn, Madam Chairperson?
Yep, move to adjourn. Regular session, all open favor.
Ms. Pacino, I?
How would I?
How would I?